Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District Six,
Joanne Kogle, District Seven,
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor,
Tyson Begley, Post Ten at Large Counselor,
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good morning and welcome to the July 11th City Council meeting. We're pleased to have you join us this morning as we work on the city's business. So the first thing we'll do is we'll start our meeting as we begin all of our meetings. That is by asking Pastor Ricky Smith from Calvary Baptist Church to please come up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, thank you for your leadership. It's an honor to serve alongside you in our amazing city. Can we go to the Lord in prayer? Father God, we come to you today acknowledging your authority and your supremacy over all things. We acknowledge that today is a gift that has been given to us from you, and we receive it as such. And we ask that you would give each of us individual strength and wisdom and discernment as we walk through our lives, caring for our families and stewarding what you've entrusted to us today. And in this moment and in this place, we ask for special favor and blessing on our mayor and our city and our leaders, doing our best to acknowledge your commandment and expectation from First Timothy 2, to hold them in high regard and to pray for wisdom and discernment as they lead. And so, God, today, as business and discussions are brought before them, Lord, I pray that you would give them ears to listen, a heart to be in tune with you, discernment to make decisions that are wise, and ultimately, walking in unity together so that we are a city who brings you glory and honor and makes your name known above all else. We submit this time to you, thanking you for your blessings. In your son's name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Smith, thank you, sir. We appreciate what you and Calvary do and throughout the community. If you would, please stand and join me in our pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first order of the business is to approve the minutes from the June 27th meeting. There's a motion and a second to approve the meetings. Are there the minutes? Are there any edits or any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. If there are any opposed, like sign. All right, they are approved. I want to ask Ms. Katie Bishop to the podium. We are going to present a proclamation in recognition of Restaurant Week. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to publish the proclamation, which reads as follows. Whereas the inaugural Columbus, Georgia Restaurant Week was started in July of 2016 as a week-long celebration of Columbus' growing culinary scene. And whereas the week has been proven a success for locally owned and operated restaurants in the Chedoochee Valley and provided a means of income for restaurants during the COVID pandemic. Whereas more than 20 locally owned and operated restaurants are participating in Restaurant Week, providing world-class dishes and special reservations, specially priced without tax, tip, or drinks. And whereas the citizens of Columbus can enjoy a week of affordable and delicious food from many of our most notable local restaurants in Columbus. And whereas giving Kitchen a nonprofit benefits in order to continue their service and emergency assistance and local and support to food, local service workers. And whereas Columbus Consolidated Government and citizens of Columbus recognize Restaurant Week and support local businesses as the strength of our community. Now therefore, our mayor, Skip Henderson of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim July 17th through July 23rd, 2023, as Columbus Restaurant Week.
Ms. Bishop, if we can turn that light on. Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this recognition. It's a really important week for locally owned and operated restaurants. It continues to be one of the busiest weeks for them throughout the year. And summer is typically a downtime for them, which is why we choose it. I think I actually saw one in the audience this week. Tuesday's Taco Truck is joining us this year. We've got over 20 restaurants. If you can go out more than once, there's lunch options, there's dinner options. This is a really important week for them. We've got to continue to support these small businesses. Thank you.
Well, Katie, we appreciate you and Yala's work trying to get this word out. You know, Columbus, for people that have lived here more than about 10 years, if you look at where we were with what was available for restaurants, where we are now with the number of locally owned outstanding restaurants that we've got, it's incredible. And it's important that people continue to patronize them. And this is a way, I think, of not only encouraging them to remember to patronize our locally owned restaurants, but as you pointed out, to also be able to provide some assistance to some very worthwhile charities. So if you would come around and let us thank you, and I've got a couple of copies of proclamation. So everybody take your spouse out to eat tonight. That's nice to take. Next week, next. We'll take it. You can warm up for tonight, and then you catch them next week. All right, we'll move on. That's all I had on my agenda. We'll move on to the city attorney's agenda. Mr. Fay?
All right, thank you, Mayor. We've got a couple of zoning items for public hearings first. And the first one is 8151 Fortson Road property going to General Commercial for restaurant use. Melinda Newton is the applicant. Is Newton here? Yep, she's here. All right, have we got any questions of the applicant around the table?
Doesn't appear so.
Melinda Newton, hold on. Let's see if anybody in the audience wants to comment for or against. Anybody in the audience want to be heard? Okay. We will bring that item back in two weeks. That's a 5:30 meeting per vote. Is that right?
25th, two weeks.
July 25th. Thank you, ma'am. Next item up is property at 7150 Schaumburg Road. It's going to residential multifamily and the General Commercial. Mr. Gibson is here. It's the Tilly petition. Any questions of Mr. Gibson? We've got a hand up, so Mr. Gibson, why don't you come up first and brief the council on what the proposal is? Then we'll hear from others.
Good morning. My name's Austin Gibson. I'm an attorney at Page Square, and I'm here in Columbus. I'm here today on behalf of Ann Vaughn Cook Tilly. She owns about the property that we're going to be discussing today, which is approximately five acres on Schaumburg Road. If you, if you're familiar with the area, if you're heading out towards the Midland area on JR Allen Parkway, and you take, you take the Blackman Road exit, you'll come to that light at Schaumburg Road. If you take a right, this property is right on your left up there, past the interchange there. And so this property is currently zoned residential one. And we, and the future land use for the area is, that entire area is for mixed-use development. It's surrounded by GC and the red there, and then multifamily uses, which is the brown color. And then across the street, you do have some residential uses. The site plan for this property calls for two separate parcels, assuming the rezoning is completed. In the front, you'd have some commercial uses. Right now, the idea is for there to be a restaurant, an urgent care or pharmacy, and then some retail on the top there. And then you'd have six multifamily buildings in the back, four units each. So you'd have approximately 24 apartment units in the back there. These are some proposed elevations of the project. As you'll see, you see the commercial buildings in the front and then the multifamily in the back. And then that's more of a close-up of those items. One thing we were told from planning was that we would need to install a left-turn lane into the development to assist in the traffic flow. And that's something the developer's certainly willing to do, and they'd be willing to comply with any other requests as far as engineering and access to the property goes. The property is going to be properly buffered, including in between the in between the multifamily piece and the general commercial piece. There'd be appropriate buffering there that would comply with the UDO. As far as public facilities, the property is currently served by all public facilities. There wouldn't be any additional expenditure in that regard. And then economic impact, obviously, in the build-out of this project, there'd be construction jobs and then also in the retail and then perhaps in the leasing offices of the multifamily, there'd be some permanent jobs there that would increase the sales tax revenue for the city. And so in conclusion, we think this is a positive development for the city. It, you know, it complies with the existing land uses around it and then also with the future land uses designated for that area. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I'm happy to wait until other folks have spoken and come up at the end, whatever you prefer. Thank you.
Doesn't appear to be any questions.
All right, well, let's hear from the neighbors. Ma'am, come on up. Come to the mic and give them your name and address, please.
Chris, we've been, we seem to be having some technical difficulties. If you'd check that light periodically and turn the one on. For whatever reason, it kicks yours off.
Hello, I'm Michelle Malecki, and I live at 7028 Robinson's Nest Drive. And I came to the planning meeting to express concerns about about the impact that it has on the 50 homes in Robinson's Nest.
And I'm Cheryl Carpenter. I live in Robinson's Nest Court also. And my property kind of sort of backs up to Schaumburg Road. We are not here opposing development of that area. Right now, it's nothing. But what we are really concerned about is the traffic flow and the impact that it's going to have on the kids going back and forth to school. There are no sidewalks on that road whatsoever. Tanker trucks are still using Schaumburg Road. Schaumburg Road is also, it is not rated for the heavy trucks, and it's clearly posted at either end. So when we have, I'm assuming bulldozers or whatever, y'all call those big things, coming in, you know, the heavy equipment coming in to work, how is that going to affect our road? They just resurfaced Schaumburg Road. And it's going to be really bad. But the main concern is going to be, how is the traffic coming out of our Robinson's Nest neighborhood? And also, just north of us on Schaumburg Road, Bridlewood comes out. And they don't have a stoplight or anything. They just sort of have to work their way in now. It's already a congested area. So what is going to be changed with Schaumburg Road to make this workable for everybody concerned, even the new businesses that they're wanting to put in? That's fine, you know, businesses are good. New housing is good. But will sidewalks be added? What will happen to the, will the road be widened? If we would appreciate a traffic study performed when the school is in session and the buses are running. Because currently, we have buses that stop all along Schaumburg Road, which is just going to bottleneck traffic. I know when they redid Schaumburg Road, the company that reasphalt, I don't know who they were, but they did an excellent job of shuttling. But it was one-way, and it took forever. Traffic would be back from in front of Robinson's Nest neighborhood, probably a mile down the road to Warren Springs Road. So we have some issues here that we would really appreciate council looking at. Main one being safety of the children that do walk the road. There are children that have to walk home, like from Shaw High School, after band practice or whatever. Not every kid rides the bus. And we see them walking along the side of the road with a 45 mile an hour limit right now. It doesn't change to 35, tend to get close to the Circle K in Warren Springs Road. So we, really, we have felt strongly about the children's safety for a long time. There was a splot many years ago that was supposed to put sidewalks in, and we didn't get them. And at that time, we have, let's see, what's the name of those apartments? Sugar Mill, we have Sugar Mill Apartments. We have Neighborhood. Should be going Neighborhood, and there's a couple more Neighborhoods. Foxfire backs up to Schaumburg Road, so their kids are riding buses. You know, there are like 50 houses just in Robinson's Nest. And then you have Bridlewood that if they do not exit onto Schaumburg Road, they go back through Foxfire. So that's going to increase the traffic on Foxfire if we don't do something to address this issue on Schaumburg Road, which is not necessarily new buildings. Bridlewood's had an issue there for a long time because the way their road comes into Schaumburg Road. You have the, when you come off of JR Allen, you turn southbound on Schaumburg Road, you have the red light there, and immediately, you have a road that swings back and around to go into Bridlewood. So you have merging from different areas there. And then you have a couple of houses, a church, and right on the left is going to be these apartments. So now would be the time, in our opinion, if y'all would look at this traffic flow issue, especially when school is on.
Yes. Well, and the other concern is that we take our lives in our hands every single day just leaving our neighborhood because people coming down Schaumburg Road think they're still on JR Allen. And they're, they're doing more than the 45. And it is a curve. There is no, we have no visibility until we're halfway out. I think there have been some major accidents where the churches on either side of us have the same difficulty. We can't see anything from the left. The church on Schaumburg Road Baptist Church can't see anything coming from the right. So on the map, it doesn't look like it's much of a curve, but there is no visibility to enter Schaumburg Road. And that's with the traffic, the trip planning, which I didn't, I got from the city planning meeting, that it's going to go from 49 trips to 610 trips. That's five times more traffic on Schaumburg Road, where, you know, something's got to be done for the safety of everybody.
Excuse me, ma'am. Mayor Pro Tem?
Hi, I'm Gary Allen. I'm your counselor for the area. I'd be glad to set up a meeting with you to talk about this thing. We can get Mr. Gibson there as well. And just to answer your question, I think somebody made a comment about the sidewalks, a splot for the sidewalks. The splot, the splot sidewalk projects were designed around the schools. So we started with the schools, and we sort of spider-wrept out from there. They were not set up to do every street in the city. So that's kind of the way the project worked. But I think I'll have to let the planning division talk to the project itself and the traffic coming. I think that was a concern that y'all had raised.
We want to, we're not opposed to this. You know, we just want it, need it to be safe for everybody concerned, for us getting out of our neighborhood, for the children that might have to walk home, for the school buses that load and unload. You know, and for the people in the churches also. If somebody just drive down Schaumburg Road from JR Allen to Warren Springs Road.
Now, I challenge you to come into Robinson's Nest neighborhood and try to get out safely. That's my challenge.
Yeah, we really, yeah, Ms. Carpenter, if you don't mind, provide your address, where you live.
736 Robinson's Nest Court.
Okay. That's just for the record.
My name on the record is Cheryl Curtis. I remarried.
Okay. All right, if you hit your light again, I'm sorry, we're having some technical difficulties here. So I imagine the podium light's going to go off again, and it did.
Thank you. Just one more point I wanted to address that y'all had brought up was the speed on the road. And the chief is in the audience, and he's hearing what you're saying. And also, the weight limit of the road. Chief, if you could have your guys, I know Deputy Chief Kennedy has been helping me with some other roadways where the trucks have been violating that as well. So if you could help us with Schaumburg Road, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Chris, turn that back. It's on.
The tanker trucks have figured it out. They don't come when the school buses are running because they can't come as fast. So when school buses are running, like right now, they're not running. So they're northbound on Schaumburg Road full and southbound empty. You know, we're not seeing as many as we used to, you know, but that just, in case they want to patrol it, that would be kind of like a generalized timeframe for them, instead of sitting out there all day.
Thank you. Robinson's Nest Homeowners Association has a meeting on July 20th at 7 o'clock at Schaumburg Road Baptist Church. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we had counselor who wanted, Mr. Johnson?
Counselor. Counselor Thomas?
I seem to recall that in other issues of this sort, particularly about the sidewalks, we have required the developer to put in sidewalks. Is that an option with this, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, to to not have sidewalks, you have to file a variance to council, as you've seen in the last couple of months with a couple of developments. So they would have specifically request no sidewalks. But yes, they have to build sidewalks in front of this developer.
Hit your light, and I apologize.
I know that that will not solve all of the sidewalk problems on Schaumburg Road, but it will at least begin some of that. Is there any, and I don't know where you would go with this, to lower the speed limit on Schaumburg Road? I know that sometimes it doesn't matter if you lower the speed limit, they're not going to follow it anyway. But is that, is that an option?
That is something we would get with the engineering department about and ask them.
Would you do that? Thank you.
And another thing to add, roundabouts at the interchanges of Schaumburg and Blackman are going to be added and banned too of the T-Splot, which will start around 2026. And we can look at potentially expanding some of the design out to maybe address some of that, depending on the financials.
And I know when, probably when Schaumburg Road was developed, there were not these other developments, residential and so forth, out there. But now that they are, we need to do whatever we can to make sure that our, not only our kids are safe, but other people traveling on Schaumburg Road are safe too. So if you would look into those couple of things, Mr. Johnson, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis?
Mr. Johnson, I, this somewhat pertains to the request as far as what we're dealing with today. But I just wanted to say, I was glad to just hear you say about the roundabouts at Blackman Road and Schaumburg Road. The plans there, Council Allen and I have talked about that. There's one side that has really been dangerous there on Blackman Road. And I would encourage you to, whatever we can do to expedite that, that is an area that needs to be addressed because it is extremely dangerous. And I know Council Allen can vouch. He gets a lot of calls. I get those calls too. It's not my district. But we do, I use that hardware store there at, Ace Hardware Store on a regular basis. And it is extremely difficult, especially going, I guess it would be going west, getting off west and then trying to make a left or right turn or crossing over to head down towards Schaumburg. So if, you know, anything you can do to expedite that would be.
We can certainly talk to the T office in Atlanta about any, expediting any projects, whether they'll do it or not.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Any other people in the audience want to be heard? Okay, we'll bring that back in two weeks at the 5:30 meeting. Mr. Gibson, thank you. Mayor, next item is a first reading that would create a new Article 22 and Chapter 22 of the city code to create a Liberty Theater and Cultural Arts Center Advisory Board with nine members. And there's some substitute language around the table that Counselor Huff wants to introduce, but now's the time for any discussion.
Counselor Huff?
Thank you, Mayor. Article 22 is the Liberty Theater Cultural Center Arts Center Advisory Board. Just a couple of things I looked at and thought might be helpful. In Section 2-296 on operation generally, it states that we will have a nine-member voting board. What I'd like to add is that one of the nine members be a licensed CPA on that board to work with our finance department and the civic center. And in Section 2-298 A4, I'd like to add down where it says, it says the board shall review financial statements of the Liberty Theater and Cultural Arts Center with a representative from the finance department and on at least an annual basis. And what I'd like to add there, along with the finance department, there'd be a board, the board chair and civic center director shall report to council along with them to give that annual update.
That's a number five, a quarterly update.
Oh, quarterly, okay. And let's see. Board chair, civic center, report, council on results. Okay. So one is annual and one is quarterly. So number four is the annual. When the annual is done with the finance department, I'd like for the board chair and civic center director just to be here just to, you know, everybody's on the same team and everything's working well. And on number five, it would be the quarterly update. It says that they will have site visits quarterly. So after the site visits, if they would come, and where it says on four and five, it says board chair or civic center director. I'd like that to say board chair and civic center director. I'd like our representative from the board to be with them, just to come in and give us. So basically, what I'm asking for is four is on the annual update on the financials that when our finance department and the civic center reports, that we have a board chair and civic center director here. So that if we have questions, we can get them answered. And the same thing on number five for quarterly updates.
Do you want the board chair and director in both of those?
Yes, or a board representative, but the chair can't be here. And if that would say and, take or out and add and.
There's a motion, second, for those amendments. Any discussion?
All right, this would be the entire substitute, all these amendments that have been discussed on the motion.
All right, Counselor Tucker, is this to the motion? Okay.
Is there something precluding a member of council to serve on this board as additional level layer of oversight?
I mean, we don't need a council on the board because they're going to report back to us quarterly.
Just asking.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I put it in quarterly, so we'll have quarterly updates, so nothing gets behind. They'll do site visits every quarter and report back to us.
When you say quarterly update, are they going to come?
Come here, yeah, and report to us, so we'll know every three months what's going on. And then annually, when they come in and discuss the financials, they'll come in with the finance team, and we'll have board chair and civic center director, so we can get all our questions answered.
All right, seeing no further questions, all in favor of the All right, seeing no further questions, all in favor of the substitute, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, it'll come back in two weeks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll bring that back in two weeks as substituted and amended and allow a vote at that time. Mayor, next, we've got a resolution requesting a special exception for a private school in the existing buildings at 4361 Weems Road. There's a 50-foot natural buffer required plus an opaque fence as part of the grant of this exception, if it is approved. It's up for discussion.
Counselor Thomas?
I guess, Mr. Johnson, as I read this report, it did not say about the private school, is this gonna be a K-12 private school, or is it gonna be something short of that?
It's gonna be K-12. K-12.
K through 12.
And, okay, that's, that's what I needed, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Counselor Crabbe?
Is there specific language in the ordinance, well, the agreement, the conditions, for the fence to be no closer than the buffer line?
Not that I'm aware of, but I would, the applicants here, if y'all would like to hear from the applicant.
I've spoken with the next door neighbor, and that's, that's what they had requested, and I would think that that would be, that his main concern about having that fence and that buffer was that, that pond and that lake. And so that the, the fence is on, you know, the school's side of the lake, and it, and so, and I would think that you wouldn't be building the fence through the lake anyway.
No, it'd have to be on their property.
So that's what they were, that's what they were asking, is to make sure that the fence came not in the buffer zone, but at the edge of that buffer zone.
That's, if, if, if the property line encroaches into the woods and you want to make that line at the tree line, you have that discretion as a condition.
I'd like to add that as a condition.
All right, motion second to add it as a condition. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? Okay. Solve the questions from council.
And that would be the fence would be on the south side of the pond, I suppose. If we're looking at the map. It would not be in other person's property right above that. It would be obviously on this property on the south side of any pond. That's my understanding. All right, we'll get some language added in to cover that, but you need to go on. This is a matter that's a public hearing today, so if the applicant is here, they can come forward. We can see if anybody else in the audience wants to comment. Any, any people want to comment for or against on the special exception? All right, just give them your name and address for the record, so we have you down.
Amy Gill, G2 Commercial Real Estate, 5607 Whitesville Road.
All right, any other questions around the table before we bring it up for a vote?
No, sir.
It's ready for action now, as amended with the fencing location.
Motion second to prove is amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, it passes.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Mayor. Next item is a resolution commending Mr. John Rivers. Counselor Barnes has a original at his desk.
Mr. Rivers and his family and guests, please come to the podium. The mayor and council and guests in the gallery and viewing audience, this is somewhat of a serendipitous moment for me. When I retired from the military, I heard about Mr. Rivers. The field of architecture is, I'm gonna just read something. Now, even now, out of 100,000 architects, only 2,500 are African-Americans. So it's, it stuck out in my mind when I retired, and I heard Mr. Rivers' name. And when I was elected to council, I, we bumped into each other, I think you might have remembered that, on the sidewalk, and we just felt, and I said, are you Mr. Rivers? And we had a really good, maybe a two or three-minute conversation. But in my mind, I said, you know, I would like to, to highlight what a groundbreaker you are by doing something. But Mr. Rivers left Columbus, and I'm gonna mention what I mentioned to you. I had thought Mr. Rivers had passed away. And didn't think anymore about it, and I bumped into the mayor here, I mean, and, and at a meeting at the River Valley Regional Commission, and I just happened to see a card that he had, and it said, John Rivers. And I said, I hate to ask this question, is he alive? She said, he sure is. He's living in South America. And so this is a, something that I appreciate very much doing, because you are a groundbreaker. And so it is my pleasure. And Mr. Rivers and his wife flew in from Ecuador. Let me read the proclamation. I have to introduce everyone. The proclamation reads as follows, it says, whereas John Rivers was born to Lula Francis Snyder and John R. Rivers on August the 24th, 1942, in McLeanville, South Carolina. Whereas he was a member of the 1955 Cannon Street All-Star Baseball Team that was denied the opportunity to play in the Little League World Series because of segregation. Whereas he graduated in 1965 from Hampton Institute with a degree in art. He went on to Columbia University Graduate School of Architecture from 1968 to 1969, became a licensed architect in 1990, a profession that even today, out of the over 100,000 architects nationally, only approximately 2,500 are African-Americans. And whereas in March of 1998, he was hired by Heck Burdishaw Johnson-Kidd and Clark to be the onsite architect to supervise the construction of the Rivers Center for the Performing Arts, and was eventually given a permanent position. And whereas in 2004, Mr. Rivers established his own firm, John Rivers Associates, Inc., JIRA. For five years, he was the only African-American architect in Columbus. And whereas significant projects completed by Mr. Rivers include the Rivers Center for the Performing Arts, St. James AME Church renovation, Friendship Baptist Church renovation, the coffee beanery, Liberty Theater distinctive sidewalk paving, Allen Temple design drawing, and the design services for the enrichment services. And whereas he was the president of the West Georgia Chapter of the American Institute of Architecture, AIA, was a leadership Columbus graduate, received the M. Martin Luther King Breakfast Award of appreciation from the Alpha Psi Alpha Fraternity, and 10 Years in Business Award from Congressman Sanford Bishop, and he served as a board member of the Columbus Technical College Foundation. Whereas in 2014, Mr. Rivers retired, and he and his wife of 60 years, Ms. Robinia Sumpter Rivers, live in South America and have two children, daughter Sophia, Sophia, Gail Rivers, and son M. Von Nicosi, and four grandchildren. Now therefore, the council of Columbus, Georgia, this council commends Mr. John Rivers for opening avenues in the field of architecture for the minority community and celebrate his architectural fingerprint on the city of Columbus, Georgia, made through his numerous significant design projects. And I move for its adoption.
All right, there is a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? I will change the signification of our votes this time. All those who are in favor, please rise and applaud.
Congratulations.
Mr. Rivers?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you all very much. I'm, I'm here, Pop Barnes.
I apologize, sir, many, when, when Mayor told me, no, he's still on this side of the earth.
Yeah, it was, it was hilarious when we met, because a good friend, Ken Sumter, who's mayor of Fort Gaines, Georgia, we do business together for the last 20 years or so. He's in design and construction. Told me that he met Pop Barnes, and, and he wants you to give him a call, and I called you. The rest of the story, here I am. But anyway, I want to make this very short. I see some very familiar faces here, longtime friends. Isaiah, we go way, way back. Bruce, church brother, yeah. And I want to thank the mayor and the council for recognizing the time that I was in Columbus and the contribution that I made in the field of architecture. Columbus is still dear to our hearts. We were here for 20-plus years. Time flies. And we made a lot of friends, and the community embraced my services while I was here. And I would like to express appreciation for those who did. Lot of support, and kind of had the success that I did without the support of the community. Very embracing, loving community, took me in. I came in from Jacksonville, Florida, and I couldn't believe there was a 65, $70 million project in Columbus, Georgia, but it was, it was real. And that's how I got here, as Pop mentioned. I was the onsite architect for the Rivers Center for the Performing Arts. Historic project, very complicated, very challenging, but we got it done. So without further ado, I, I must pay special tribute to Lula Francis Snyder Rivers. I think somebody famous said, all that I am and all that I ever hoped to be, I owe to my mother. And I'm quite sure we all have similar stories. She was my champion. Twenty-year-old that bought two houses at 20 and started a restaurant business. I think some of that rubbed off on me, but that's unheard of in these times. A consummate entrepreneur, and it filtered down to me, I'm quite sure. Because I've been doing this for 56 years now, and I transitioned to art, I'm now a painter. And they always said, find something to do when you retire, and I found it, and I've been painting for the last six years. I had my first show in Ecuador, that's where we're living, a couple of years ago. And that's kind of my new passion. Without, and, and last of all, my great friends who decided to show up, I appreciate all of you so much.
Would you introduce them?
Yes.
If you have an opportunity.
Well, I mentioned Mr. Sumter here, the mayor of.
You can't hear, you're thinking, come, yes.
Mr. Sumter, mayor of Fort Gaines, Georgia, and Roselle. Marilyn Jackson. Carol Deutsch. Deidre Jones and Pastor Jones, Jay Jones, 50 years friendship or more. And of course, my lovely wife and supporter, Robinia, Robinia Rivers.
That's the driving force now.
That's the driving force.
There you go.
Absolutely. So thank you all very much for this honor. It's the kind of thing that you don't plan for, and it's sweeter when you don't. Thank you very much.
Counselor Huff?
Good morning, sir.
Morning, morning.
Good to see you. I didn't know what happened to you. They told me you were traveling.
He probably thought the same thing of me.
Yeah, it's kind of on the page with pops, you just kind of disappear.
Yeah.
Yeah, but thank you for all your work in Columbus.
Thank you.
And you've touched everyone in the city at some point, some, some type of way. But thank you so very much for the St. James Project.
Thank you.
For those of you all that don't know, historic St. James AME Church on Sixth Avenue had nothing but steps for the entrance. You came up the first set of steps, and there's a second set of steps waiting for you on the inside.
That's right.
So as you had either problems with your legs, or you got a little older, and it was a little tougher getting in and out, he came in and helped design an elevator tower that we have there now, so everyone is able to come in through the elevator tower and come in and out of services without a problem. And it was just a wonderful design, wonderful project. We enjoy working with you. And for your ears, we just paid it off.
Excellent. Amen.
Thank you so very much. Best of luck to you.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Rivers for all of his work here in, in our city, and, and Mr. Rivers, you certainly, you know, made your mark on Columbus, Georgia. And then I want to thank you for mentoring this young man. When you opened your own architectural firm, you were doing some work for the city, and I had a chance to visit his office. And in his office was this young man who had graduated from University of Tennessee. And those of you around the table know this guy named John Hutchinson. And he was there working in your office, and you were training him and mentoring him in the field of, in the architectural field. And, and so I, I want to apologize because, you know, after I saw him there, I was able to steal him from you and bring him to work for the city. And so John came to work for the city and managed construction projects, and it was all because of what you taught him, the experience. And, and then John went on to become Director of Inspections and Codes, and he made his mark on inspections and codes. And then the mayor of Temple, Florida, hired John Hutchinson away from us. But it started with you. And so you made your mark on Columbus, you, you lifted others who perhaps would not have had a chance or an opportunity and look at them now because of what you did for them. So I commend you, congratulate you, and thank you for all that you've done.
Appreciate it. I, I'm gonna take one minute to just give you some background about this young man. Because he's, you know, you know when some people have a glitter in their eyes, something special about him? Well, I knew it when he was a senior in high school. His dad called me, I was on the Rivers Center at the time, and said, I've got a young man graduating high school this year, and I want you to sit down and have lunch with us and kind of tell them what the profession is all about. It was, it was John, J.C. High School. We had lunch on broad at Rose's Jamaican place back in the day, yeah. And he was just bright-eyed and naive, of course, but he was driven, I can tell. He went off to college. Five years later, my telephone rang. Mr. Rivers, this is J.C. You got a job for me? That's the kind of guy he was. He just graduated from, to University of Tennessee. And I didn't have a job, but I made a job. Somebody can remember me five years later. I made a job. Took him on, and it was with no regret. He was, he was destined to be successful at what he did, and I'm glad to hear that he. And I'm glad to hear that he also made his mark at the city. Yeah. Thank you, Isaiah.
Well, Mr. Rivers, you have left a legacy. You've built buildings and built young men. And we, buildings are still here, the young man got away. We may bring him back. And we are all tremendously pleased to find out that, like Mark Twain, the rumors of your demise have been greatly exaggerated. If you have a moment, if you'll take a moment, come around, let us shake your hands, sir, and I'll present you with this resolution. Mayor, you want to come through? Mr. Rivers, if you have a moment, if we can get all of you right here, council would like a photo. Mr. Fay.
Okay, Mayor, next, next item up is a resolution. The next item relates to a resolution passed last year that was number 13522, where council resolved that we would have an RFP for indigent care services. And in that resolution, you specify that all entities which are successful bidders in the upcoming RFP will have an opportunity to seek reimbursement for costs for this past fiscal year. And as you recall, last week, all bids, any and all bids were rejected. But this resolution on the table would allow the two recommended bidders to seek reimbursement for indigent care expenses for the previous year, those being Piedmont and Mercy Med, the two recommended bidders. But it's all up for discussion right now. This would be consistent with the resolution you passed last year, but you can certainly do what you want in your discretion.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. City Attorney. Look, I was prepared to come in here today after seeing this resolution. It was kind of a little confusing after the conversation and the dialogue that we had last week, that the council was concerned about equality and parity amongst our healthcare providers. And let me just say, we love our healthcare providers and they do a valuable service for our community. And just in working through this and trying to understand it, I know there's, there's components here that, that it's hard to, it's kind of complex and in so many words, you've got a short amount of time to cover this matter, but I know that there is a need to address the inmate care that we provide every year. That's a separate, what I look at as a separate component to the indigent care. And then trying to understand the indigent care in our community and it goes back to the time of when there was a county, somewhat of a county healthcare type program that was set up to, where counties can come in and provide healthcare in their communities because they're really, counties were left up to their own to do this back then. But then the laws changed, the laws came, changed in the late nineteen nineties. The laws changed to what we now are under what is known as IMTLA. And IMTLA has changed the whole world. But in working through this and trying to understand what we're trying to accomplish, really this resolution states a lot of what we're trying to accomplish in providing a wide range of services and helping, taking the opportunity to help many healthcare providers in our community. And really what we're doing today, now that this new law is on the books and when you really look at it, there's some things I'd like to read about this law. But we're somewhat, there's counties that have opted out of this, they don't do it anymore. Macon doesn't recently, Macon doesn't do it anymore. But we're still doing it because it's somewhat a benevolence out of our hearts that we want to help out and we want to, to help the needs in our community. And then also looking through this, it struck me that without, can you imagine our community without one hospital? We got two hospitals, two top-tier healthcare facilities in our community. Can you imagine our community without one? Can you imagine without these hospitals? Really, you don't have indigent care. There's no indigent care. Because our top-tier healthcare providers are the ones that make it all happen. Without healthcare, without mental healthcare, you really don't have indigent care. So there's a wide range of services that we're trying to deal with in our community and it's very, very complex. I want to read something out of this, this law to you where it states, the IMTLA law basically requires hospitals and emergency departments to provide emergency medical care to everyone who needs it regardless whether Medicare or Medicaid, regardless of ability to pay or insurance status. Under that law, patients with similar medical conditions must be treated consistently. The law applies to hospitals that accept Medicare reimbursement and all patients, not just those covered by Medicare. Hospitals are, have three obligations under IMPLA, IMPLA, IMPLA. First, they must provide all patients with medical screening, examination to determine whether emergency medical conditions exist in regard for their ability to pay for services. Second, where an emergency medical condition exists, they must either provide treatment under the patient, for the patient until it's stabilized, or they do have the capability to transfer the patient to another hospital. Third, hospitals with specialized capabilities are obligated to accept transfers and if those, they have the capabilities to treat them, they must. Medical care cannot be delayed by questions about methods of payment or insurance coverage. And I started thinking about that and that's exactly last week in our conversation, what we were trying to accomplish, that somehow, under the current model that we're using and there's, look, we're, I really believe at the bottom of my heart, we're trying to do the right thing. But somehow, there's a number of us here at this table that feel like certain key healthcare providers, primarily our top-tier healthcare provider, was somehow left out of the equation. And we're kind of at a fork in the road to figure out what happened and it's tough to do that at this table. But it's obvious to me that we need to start over and try to figure out a model, a new model. And that's where we're at, that gives everybody an equal opportunity to apply, to being reimbursed, to have an opportunity to receive this help because they're all valuable, especially our two hospitals. Like I said, you don't have indigent care without your two hospitals. And when you break it down into what they, they actually do and how they evolve, which in the last week or two weeks, I've been educated on stuff, I didn't even know what these hospitals do in our community and without them, the other agencies out there, even the agencies that we want to award, it's not possible for them to provide indigent care without the hospitals, without what they do. They're connected to all these other entities that we're trying to address. And I'm not going to name them this morning, but it's true, they're connected and they provide the services. And without those services, those entities don't, they're not able to provide what we're trying to accomplish here in our community. So you have to ask the question, is there parity or how did certain providers get left out of the equation? It's not adding up. And I, I think this council is really, really concerned about that and making it happen. So I know that this morning on the resolution that's provided and it's somewhat, like I said, confusing and complex, was last week, we dealt with a model going forward that we canceled to reevaluate and relook at it going into 2024, but now we're going back into 2023 and we're using the 2024 model that we just canceled with the recipients of that getting the funds that we've kind of stored for the last year. And I still am back at that fork in the road about, you know, we need to look at this in broader terms and as the resolution states, in a wide range of services to be provided. And personally, I know, there's a lot of us that know the argument or the conflict that's been going on in our community for a long time of somewhat around the word favoritism. There's a big concern that our top-tier healthcare providers have not been treated equally. We've got that opportunity now to put that argument or that conflict to rest and to start out on new footing and to allow, and to allow that relationship to flourish in our community where we, we do have parity, we do have equality with these funds. And if we're going to do it as a city and we're going to choose to go this path, I think it's important that we have that mindset, that we, we take care of everybody. Now, I just don't know how everybody got, some people got left out, I don't know, but it concerns me and, and that certainly needs to be addressed. But, you know, this morning I was prepared to add some more and consulting with the city attorney, add some of the entities that got left out, but then I found out that that can't do that, or I was advised that I couldn't do that. So now I'm back at the situation, well, do we just carry the funds over? Get the model that we need, that we know is going to help and work in our community and in address at the same time, we do need to address the inmate healthcare that's already been provided. I don't know what that figure is, but it's kind of lumped into this whole funding of indigent care. You have the inmates, doesn't say it in the resolution, but you have the inmates' healthcare and then you have what we term indigent. I really don't like that word, by the way. I don't like that word. It just, you know, there's a lot of people that have issues with it, but that's the definition. But healthcare for those who are less fortunate in our community at the same time. And I say again, you don't have indigent care unless you have healthcare and mental healthcare. And what we're proposing to move forward with doesn't really cover that. It doesn't really cover that. And I'm beginning to wonder if we just need to follow what the state, the state models of reimbursement. Maybe that works and applies to everybody. I don't know yet. It, it might be that simple, it might be complex, but I do know that what this council is trying to do is to make sure everybody gets an opportunity in recognizing what our two top care health providers are doing in our community. Because some of these recipients of these rewards don't even have a program without these top-tier healthcare providers. That doesn't make sense. So they are doing this stuff in our community and they're doing it on their own dime at their cost because if you talk to them, they'll tell you it's the right thing to do. They're doing it. And certainly they can apply under the law, the IMTLA law that they can apply for, funding and reimbursement, but it still doesn't cover what they do in our community. And I say it again, I started this off, imagine our community with just one hospital or losing one hospital. We are so fortunate to have two top-tier healthcare providers and they, both of them do different things in our community, but one does not work without the other. Matter of fact, one relies on the other and they rely on each other. And Pops, you know this, they rely on each other. They, they cross-serve the needs. There you go, that's what I was looking for. So I want to hear what my colleagues have to say, but that's, you know, that's my concern that we're here again at the fork in the road after we had the conversation last week. I understand, honestly, I forgot about 2023, but, but the process of the RFP came to its last council meeting. That was it. And evidently, we were going forward and we were going back. And I, I still have a concern with that. And, and look, there may be some of these entities out there that might have an issue with this, but we would be asking them to just have patience, let us work this out, let us get it taken care of and you'll have that opportunity. And, you know, the, the services have already been provided in 2023, they've already been paid for, it's just a reimbursement. So I, I think this will work out. I, I just would like to hear my other colleagues and the concerns that, that they have as well, because this is, it's eye-opening, what this has brought to the forefront and learning truly how we're providing care in our community for those that, that need it or are less fortunate. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Tucker.
Yes, I, I agree with you, Counselor Davis, in reference to, let's getting it right. And sadly, yes, we didn't, well, whatever happened with St. Francis not being able to meet the requirements for the RFP that we put out, it will help not only St. Francis but Valley Healthcare as well, because Dr. Asante Hiltz, unfortunately, she wasn't able to apply because she had just transferred from our Department of Health. So it would just help that we, it's fairness. So I just think that we need to get it right, slow it down and ensure that we're not being too stringent with the RFP process and just being fair. I also wanted to ask Attorney Clifton Fay, since the state has the indigent care model, is it possible for us to, what would be the process to change it to maybe community healthcare or change that name from indigent? What would be the process for us to do that?
That's something you'd have to ask the legislature to do in your resolutions every October.
Can we?
Yeah, because indigent care is a definition that's used all through the state law, so they would have to look at that.
Okay. And the reason why I'm asking because of what Counselor Davis mentioned, some counties and some areas don't provide the indigent care through the budget, through, through the city budget. So this is something, in my opinion, that we're doing as a, really showing our, trying to help, you know, those low-income families. So that's not what the state is offering, it's what the city is offering, the consolidated government.
Yeah, a lot of your rural counties can't afford that, but your larger counties like here in Columbus, y'all set aside 2.5 mils last year, I'm not sure what it was the next fiscal year, y'all did set aside money trying to take care of folks who are less fortunate and have, or happen to be inmates that need care. But it's... But it's it's up to you going forward, whether you put out a new RFP. You don't have to. That's something y'all can discuss. The resolution on the table just addresses what you said last year, that you would let any successful bidders get reimbursed. That's all this does. It would let Piedmont and Mercy Med apply for reimbursement.
Yeah, but as as Counselor Davis was talking about, far as getting it right, ensuring that the process is correct, making sure what Counselor Cogo mentioned previous meeting, that it's not too stringent in reference to the application process, but just looking at it and actually getting it right. I think that's where we are right now. Just wanting to do the right thing for our providers. And and to be more involved. Thanks, Counselor Barnes.
Counselor Barnes.
I think that the last time, Isaiah, you mentioned you were surprised that it just took me completely by surprise, I'll be honest with you, because in this community, we're really blessed. We have St. Francis, we have Piedmont, but we also have Valley Healthcare. I did speak with Dr. Asante Hiltz. There are a number of organizations. So we're blessed in this community. But, you know, the communities, the organizations that have done so much over the long haul, they need to be compensated for for all the work and for the finances. I was shocked. Glad that Piedmont and Mercy Med, both those organizations do a tremendous amount of work. But there are also other organizations involved. And thanks to a number of people, I've gotten a little bit more educated. I've gotten with Counselor Davis and just found that I never knew half the things that we know now about the model, the state model. I've had individuals come up to me and said, why was St. Francis not included? I told them I I didn't know. They said, you didn't know? Well, what, why did you and council make the, I said, well, we we didn't know. Well, who did? We don't even know who who did, and we should know. And I I would like for council to be more involved in the process now that we do have a, there is a state model that's there because we are directly responsible to the people, and so we need to be more involved. Everybody knows my thing is healthcare. We are blessed in this community by having a number of organizations that have really provided. And community care has a nice ring to it, but indigent care over the long haul. And my concern is that they need to be reimbursed. They need to be in the mix with this right here. We have the monies. We need to do what I think is the right thing. And and so I would like for us to go back to the drawing board and and really work on this here. What I've said is that, you know, nothing's perfect. The only perfect person that walked the earth was the good Lord. So people make mistakes in organizations. We stumble a little bit on things. And so we need to go back to the drawing board on this, and we do have a state model, something that I didn't realize that we had. And that would be my input. I know I've talked to a number of the counselors here. I'd like for them to get their inputs, so there's just not one or two individuals who are who are speaking. And it's interesting, Isaiah, that you said you were surprised. So you were, and I mentioned to two groups, I said, the city manager deliberately kept himself out because he doesn't want to be involved in that. But he didn't know. He was expecting another organization to have applied. And so it just shows that we need to go back to the drawing board. I would like to have council input, counselors to be involved in the process so that we can answer the questions. We don't even know what the criteria that was used, you know. And so not pointing fingers, happy that the other, the two organizations who have done a lot in this community, Piedmont, Mercy Med, but there are other organizations, as you verbalized, Isaiah, that 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 you were surprised. I was totally surprised by it. And so I think we just need to start back. We need to have a model to follow that all the organizations can come, they can, everything's about numbers now. So it's a level playing field. You did this here, you can prove it. You've done this, then you get this slice of the pie. You've done this here, then you get this slice. It needs to be a process that I feel that council needs to be involved of and so that we can ask the tough questions that have been asked of me. And I'm positive have been asked of some of the other counselors as well. I see some head shaking. And it, I was really taken aback when I said, you, you, you weren't involved?
Well, and I want to explain.
No, and it's not pointing any fingers. I'm just, I'm just explaining what I'm hearing from the community. I'm just letting this body know what I am hearing from the community. So it's not pointing any fingers at anyone. It's just that we need to step back, take a breather, and just revisit it again.
Well, let me just explain so that it's very clear. When I said that I was surprised, I was surprised that certain organizations in this community did not submit an interest at all, and that surprised me. And so I wasn't surprised about the process. You know, it's, our procurement process has not changed, you know. And and as you, I shared with you last meeting, and I've shared with you in all of my past in terms of my career city manager, I do not get involved in the procurement process. I've watched people go to jail for getting involved in procurement process. I don't want to be involved in the procurement process going forward. And when I say not involved, we have a procurement law. We advertise for bids or request for proposals. And when we do that, even those who who are indicating an interest, sign a form. Sign a form saying they will not talk to you or anyone in the process. And for a council member to go and talk to someone who it plans to submit a, a, an interest, we need to read the procurement law and say, and see what it says. Council members should not be involved in that process. I'm certainly not going to get involved in that process, but that's up to council. If you want to talk to vendors and who are expressing an interest and I've watched, all you got to do is Google, and it tells you. And so when I said I was surprised, I expected certain organizations to automatically apply because of where and who they provide service to. They're in the heart of South Columbus, the organization that I was surprised. And and they are, their goal is to make sure that people get healthcare who are uninsured or underinsured or otherwise just would not get healthcare, and they did not apply. And certainly both hospitals applied, but I, and I don't want to get into yeah, what's, what they submitted for, but but we had an RFP. It went out and and they applied, and there was an evaluation committee, as we do with all. And and they brought forward their recommendations. It went on my agenda. That's when I bring it to you. I don't call the hospitals or their representatives, have discussion with them prior to or after they submit. And so I I heard the question about, I think, the city attorney. There was three mills allocated for indigent care. And for 30 years, a sole source hospital, a contract signed 30 years ago, had that contract. It expired in June of 2021, I believe, or 2022, 2022. And so in that budget process, we went from three mills down to two and a half mills for indigent care. And then further during, and further deliberations in the budget process of the two and a half mills that was available, $2, $2 million was taken from the two and a half mills. And that leaves us what we are working with, with indigent care. We had two and a half mills, $2 million was taken to do the rollback, and now we're working with what's left. And so I I'm interested in hearing all of the discussion. Any and all were disqualified or thrown out last week. Look, we're open to do whatever this legislative body wants to do, whatever. And so I'm going to sit back and listen, and we're going to be guided by your direction. That's where I am.
Counselor Cogo.
I I echo and agree with all of my my colleagues here. Just, I I think last time, you know, I made the comment that I thought that maybe the RFP application process may have been a little bit stringent. Would we be able to see in addition to the RRP packet? I think I, I think I asked for it maybe last week. But could we also see that the state process as well so that we can put them side by side? That way we can kind of compare the two processes and as we, as we move forward and take what, take what we like out of our RFP process and add it to that state the state process as well? If we could do that, that would be great.
Yeah, and certainly, as I said, we're going to be guided by your direction. If you want us to take the state guidelines and make them our local guideline.
Well, no, I mean, I think we just want to be able to see them side by side so that we can see what the state says and then what our RFP process says, so that we can compare them. And then we can take our RFP process and take, take some of the guidelines out of the state or maybe, maybe we just throw the whole RFP process out of, out and just use the state. But, you know, as we, as we move forward and create something that's our own, I think it's important that we see both, both processes side by side so that we can build the most efficient ones. Just like, you know, if you're going to write a book on Amazon, you go to the bad reviews and you look at what people want. So, you know, I think if we, if we can, if we can compare the two, I think that will be, be valuable moving forward, so.
Yeah, I can have staff work on, and we can come back and we can show you, here's, you know, our RFP and here's the state and and side by side. And you can tell us where you want to go with it. Yeah, we can, we can certainly do that.
And then, Mr. City Attorney, can we make a note before we move forward to bring that name change up on the legislative agenda in October? To, to the community healthcare program or something along that line?
Asking the state to use different language.
Just to make a note so that we don't forget about it going forward.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. I think this resolution is premature. I think we need to get the process nailed down first, and then we can, then we can start distributing funds. When, you know, in the resolution that we had last year, last, what it states, the award will not be limited to one agency, but is expected to allow a wide range of healthcare facilities to participate in the indigent care program, healthcare program. So I think that using an RFP process goes counter to what we're trying to accomplish because an RFP process whittles down and limits. And we do not want any limitation except that the funds that we distribute will be distributed for the care of Muskogee County residents. That's really the only limitation. It doesn't matter who's providing care to the indigent citizens. We can fund them, and that's why I'm really interested in getting some more information about the way the state program, because there's a lot of benefits to that. Anybody can, if I, if I understand what it is, I'm wondering if it's more like an insurance claim where they put, they put in a claim that they did this type of services, this is the bill, it comes to us. We, the criteria is that they're Muskogee County residents, and they were provided healthcare services, they're indigent, their healthcare services within a certain period of time, then we reimburse them. So I, if the, if the, the other advantage of using the state program is the hospitals are used to it. These pro, these programs, they're used to the state program for getting reimbursed, and so they don't have to learn a new process. They're already using this process. We want to be, we want to be friendly to the hospitals. We don't want to create more burdens. We want to lessen their burdens. That's the whole prop, that's the whole goal of this process is to take away some of their financial burdens. We don't, certainly don't want to add bureaucratic and paperwork burdens to them in the process. So I'd really, really look forward to investigating more. I'd really like you to investigate that more and see if that's not a better way of doing it than the RFP process. Me personally, I I don't want us to use an RFP process on this just because I don't think that that's what we're trying to accomplish with this.
All right, Counselor Barnes.
Um, to your question, you mentioned you don't think counselors should be involved. I just want to be sure if I understood that.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And City Attorney, you may need to, from a legal standpoint, you know, that's a legal matter. And and you need to advise the counselors, and and I look to you for advice also.
And and I'd like to add, because this, I've asked two, I've been, I was asked two questions. What did you, meaning council, use as criteria? I said, we didn't. Who did? Can any of the counselors tell me here now? Who did? Do you know? Huh? Any counselor here know? And and so I had to honestly said, I I don't know. And I think that we know the departments, we know the departments. And then the other question is, what criteria did you use? And Mr. City Attorney, I think for individuals who are up here, who represent the citizens, we should know. We should know what the criteria was you.
We have talked about RFP in the past.
Let me be.
You, you don't inject yourself into an RFP process whether you're the city manager, the mayor, or a counselor because then people can accuse you of tainting the process. That's the only point the city manager is making. If there's a formal RFP out on the street, then counselors normally do not get involved in the process. They wait until it comes back with a recommendation for a particular vendor. And that's all we're talking about, is so the process is not tainted. There's no appearance of a conflict or anything else. It's as simple as that.
And so regarding the criteria, and we can go back and pull the video, but we gave you four updates.
Sure.
On the RFP, four, is it, was it four?
It's four, at least four.
Updates to the city council on the RFP. We can go pull the video if you'd like to see it, but but you've been informed.
I'm not saying, I I would like to know. And people ask me.
Sure.
Where was St. Francis at? Why was St. Francis left out? I don't have the answer to that.
Understand.
And and I'm not disputing the other two organizations, they do phenomenal in the community. But I think when you, when you thinking about Valley Healthcare, all that it does.
Yeah, I know.
Why was that, why was Valley Healthcare left out?
They didn't apply. Yeah, so, yeah, but.
And so I I'm thinking if the goal that we want to do is to reimburse the organizations that have done indigent care, I think that we need to stop. If that is our goal, we need to do that. So I think we just need to stop the train a little bit and and go back through the process and include the organizations. If there were some that didn't apply, and obviously, everybody knows the reputation of Valley Healthcare. Everybody knows the reputation of New Horizons.
Yeah.
You know, Tree of Life, I know, I'm glad that they were considered. You know, Tree of Life, I know, I'm glad that they were considered, cause they do a lot indigent care. And that's what I'm saying. I don't want this to turn out to be a pinka pointing, pinka pointing you did wrong. It's not about that.
I'm saying.
We're not the only ones who were taken aback by this year. There were other individuals who have approached. Let me ask this question. Am I the only one on council that has questions about, of people who approached? I know, so it's just not me. And you know, from me to you, I'm really proud that you are the city manager. Cause in my estimation, but I know you're the best city manager we've had and the longest serving. And you know, I support you because I know you have a tough job. But when it came to this, I have questions. And I was really taken aback by the presentation when it happened. And so I have real questions myself. My main thing is that e- every organization here in Columbus that has stepped up to the plate and provided indigent care, they need to come to the table. If, if some of them didn't know, they didn't get the information, now is the time for us to do that. But I don't want this to be personal because you know, if you don't know, and I'm looking at you, you know I support you. But at the same time, I'm thinking about my constituents who have called me on the phone and they have questions that I cannot answer and I need to. And a lot of these councilors, I wish they would speak up because I'm not the only one cause we've been speaking about this here. And it's something that we need to address. And so we're not about pointing fingers. I don't want that just to be interpreted as that. But we have questions and we need to have the questions answered. And so with that being said, I think I've said enough. Let some of the other councilors voice or verbalize their concerns as well.
Well, and, and no argument, that's why I say we want to be guided by your direction. Tell us what you want us to do. We're gonna bring what Counselor Kogel said, and we're gonna put state by, side by side with city. And whatever, I mean, we've already eliminated or any and all bids were refused. And now we're headed in a new direction. And whatever comes out as that direction, that's what we're gonna do.
Right. And I know that, and that's why I'm bringing it up now.
Yeah, but, but.
I agonize over this, I didn't want this to turn out
Yeah.
that we're, uh, we feel that the administration is not doing the job.
Yeah, well.
But because we represent the people, directly represent the people.
Yeah.
I wanna address something with the city attorney. Say what?
He was asking about the committee makeup with the non-voting individuals.
I'll let you have that, cause I think I'm talking enough right now. No, some of you other councils need to step up and verbalize your concerns. Like, everybody knows me, I wanna let you know what's on my mind. Um, and so I'm not about pointing fingers.
And I like that.
I'm about, I'm about trying to address the concerns that I've been asked by my constituents.
Mm-hmm. And, and I just wanna be clear, and I'm glad you made that point, because staff has done exactly what they should have done and brought it forward in, in the way that should have been brought forward. And so, and as we got it to the table, um, there were questions. And we want to answer those questions. You made a vote at the last meeting and it's a new day as far as I'm concerned. And once we hear from you and get direction from you, we're gonna bring you back what you asked for. But they have done their work.
And I agree with you. I agree with you 150%.
Yeah.
But now we're starting back from.
That's right.
Round one.
That's right.
And we're moving forward, yes.
Okay.
I'd like for you to address the issue with the councilors and why you think, I'd like for you to tell us, tell me legally. What, what is the legal guideline that councilors cannot have, be involved? Say what?
As a non-voting advisor.
I'll let you talk now.
Well, what, what I said a minute ago is the general rule, councilors as a legislative body do not get involved in the details of an RFP or contact potential vendors out there because that might give rise to an appearance of a conflict or an appearance that the process is tainted. That's why councilors normally, it's a good rule of thumb just to stay out of any RFP that's on the street.
As a non-voting advisor.
Well, let's, Deputy City Manager, do what?
Well, we've got about four councilors that are queued up.
As a non-voting participant. A counselor as a non-voting participant. What's the problem with that?
If you ask.
That's, that's, that's just a use.
No, I would not recommend the council is involved in any way with an RFP because you are gonna be a voting member of a legislative body that awards the contract. You don't want an appearance of a conflict anywhere through the process, that's all.
Yeah, not an attorney, but my, my opinion is because we have seen issues with other vendors. I know Counselor Crabbe was in the middle of one, that she didn't really do anything unusual except do her job. But because it was communication, prior to the time that the contract was let, there was a lot of accusations thrown at her. So I don't think that a city manager, I don't believe that a mayor, I don't believe that a counselor ought to have any communication with anybody who's actively engaged in a, in a, an RFP process. To take it a little further, one of the issues that has been talked about for years, 30 years, has been the length and, and how this contract was tied together. And there wasn't any wiggle room, there wasn't any opportunity to reevaluate or to renew. And one, I think this, these are for two-year, two-year stretches and then you've got an opportunity to renew it. And that was done because if you got in a situation where somebody came running to a counselor or to a mayor, and they've come to me too, I tell them the same thing. They asked me, why wasn't, I said, you'll have to ask them or you'll, you'll have to wait until the RFP is completed to hear how, who scored and who, who was, uh, was included in the providers. But I just think it is a, I, I think it's an incredibly risky move for council to get involved in any piece of a process from an RFP because you've opened yourself and you've opened the city up to claims of, of conflict of interest, even though there won't be any. I, I just, I have heard it from the city attorney, uh, and I've heard it from other, uh, folks through GMA and, and other areas that we talk about. You just don't, it, it, it's up to the individual councilors, but, uh, that it, um, it's a dangerous, dangerous road to go down.
Counselor Thomas.
Hang on. Well.
Um, I hope that by all of this conversation, the, um, folks who are dealing with this understand that our concern, uh, is the process. How is an RFP developed? How is it, um, put out for, uh, applicants? How is it done? What is, what is the process? I agree with, uh, my colleagues who say, let's take a look at how this is done in other places. I'm not at this point, at, uh, 10, whatever it is, 38 on today, necessarily interested in how we came about with the RFP that we voted down last week. Our question was, how did we get there? And what I would like to see from, uh, the city manager's office, educate us. Tell us what the process is. I personally have been contacted over the years I've been on council by vendors who say, hey, I gotta, you know, I gotta, uh, in, into an RFP and I want, uh-uh. I, I can't talk to you about that at all. I gotta, I have to wait until, uh, I get a recommendation from, uh, the people who do that. But what I want to know is, how do you get to giving me a recommendation? What is the process that you use? And this is not something that I'm asking you to do right now off the top of your head. I want a, I want a presentation. I want the, the, here's the state, here's the local, here's how, all of that kinda stuff. And then we can come back and say, go forth and, and do, do your duty. Um, whether or not that finally comes down to the same two vendors that were on the original RFP that you brought to us, that remains to be seen. As long as we know what the process is and how to follow the process. I've been dealing with a number of issues in the last couple of weeks. And one of the pieces of advice I have gotten over and over and over again from the same person, quite frankly, is what does the book say? What does your process say? Do that. And so what I want to know from the city manager's office and his staff, give us a, a presentation, uh, at our next council meeting, if you need to, to do that, on how we get to the point of having a red, uh, an RFP brought to us. And when you do that, we can then make some decisions and we can tell those folks who are calling to us saying, how come this vendor didn't get it? How come that vendor didn't get it? Well, here's the process. I can't do that confidential, I mean, uh, with a lot of confidence right now. So that's my, that's my request is that we do, uh, and I noticed on the, um, updates and presentations, there is an indigent care update. I'm not asking for that today. In fact, I would, I would suggest that we not have that today. That we, um, have at our next council meeting, a presentation on how we get an RFP done. Let's go by the book. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Davis.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, and I think we can do it at the table here, uh, Mr. City Attorney, but that we carry over the amount of money to be added to 2024. So all it means is that there's just gonna be a bigger pot of money and people can still apply and be reimbursed, it's just a greater amount of money. But, um, at the same time, I said this earlier, I, I do recognize the need to take care, there's an inmate healthcare component to this that, you know, it's not stated in the resolution and I'm sure we probably didn't have updates on that, but it is in there. And I think it would be appropriate that we go ahead and address that because that, that to me is a reimbursement of a service that we, we asked for. I don't know what that figure is. I don't know, but I think we can go ahead and pay that bill, if that's what we're doing. Pay that bill and then roll the remaining amount over and like Counselor Thomas said, we can work on the model and I prefer doing that later date. I do wanna clear up two things. The, the part about counselor involvement, I know it was brought up, but I, I, I wanna go on the record and say, no, I don't think, there's no counselor on this body that has participated prior to the meeting. Was it last week or two weeks ago? Was it last week? Okay, that was the first time we saw that RFP, the first time. That's why that conversation was kinda, you know, a little, you know, back and forth. But we kept saying, we didn't wanna get deep in the weeds, but we had concerns, we had concerns. And council is allowed, council is allowed to cancel that RFP and we did. And I think notices went right out, everybody knows, after that, it's public. When that RFP was, uh, posted, it was public. But I think that's when the concerns started and we've had a short, I said earlier, we've had a short ti- period of time to catch up and we've learned a lot. But I would like to have that conversation about a model. We do need to figure it out, we need to figure out. I can't sit here and tell you how, I'm not adding up how some people got left out and those. They all do good work, okay, they all do good work and we got good people. No, no, that's not an issue, but it just brings in mind, you know, and I read the resolution to you. The resolution is, I mean, it states it right here. It says, "The bid request, a wide range of professional medical services to qualified indigent residents." Okay, it says that "The award will not be limited to just one agency, but is expected to allow a wide range of healthcare facilities to participate." When I, when I saw that and read that, I, I, I really believed in my heart that everybody was gonna get some help. Everybody was gonna be able to get some support. And like I said, when you start thinking about your two top-tier healthcare providers, your two hospitals, without your two hospitals, you don't have indigent care. I'm sorry, but you just don't have indigent care. And you even look at some of the qualifications from the Department of Behavioral Health. It, it, you know, that increased stability in housing, individuals whose living situation is homeless, in or out of shelter, shall experience greater stability in housing. Engaging the homeless, individuals who are reported as homeless shall access services without barriers related to the homelessness. Improving access to healthcare and other benefits, individuals will experience improved rates of access to healthcare, Medicaid or Medicare and other benefits that they may not be eligible or eligible for. And that tells me right there, that's what we're trying to do in our community. That's what we're trying to do. The homelessness needs help and most of the time it's dealing with mental health. I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't know how they got left out. So I, I do, Mr. City Manager, I just wanted to say that.
I guess we have an RFP process.
Like I said, I've learned a lot in the last.
And so when you say left out, it implies in my mind that the staff left them out.
Well.
And, and I just wanna be clear.
I, I'm telling you, I'm wrestling with it, okay?
With, with what, the staff left them out?
I'm talking about Glenn Davis was wrestling with the matter of that.
Okay.
Because that's part of indigent care. That's what I'm, the argument, not the argument, it's just what I'm trying to connect the dots here
Okay.
with the RFP process.
Well, and, and.
But I did wanna state again, for the record, that no counselor, I think it's been very clear up here about involvement and getting involved in RFPs. We know that, we, that doesn't even have to be stated. But nobody was involved.
Sure.
And got involved.
And I'm not suggesting that, that council, council members.
I wanna make sure.
Were, were involved. And, and I'm saying, when I say involved, when we release, when, when I, we release an RFP, do not call me and ask if I can help you. Do not call me and ask if you can meet with me to talk about it. Don't make contact with me because if you do, I'm gonna report you to finance, cause you signed a form. And, and, and I'm gonna ask, Counselor Thomas said it best, follow the book. Since I, the day, the, the first day I took this job, one thing my mama told me, make sure you follow the book. And that's what I've done.
Well.
And that's what we're gonna continue to do.
Mr. City Manager, and where we're going, we're following the book.
That's, that, and that's all I'm saying.
I just don't want the public, when they hear things like that, they're looking at which council, which council member got involved, which council member did that. So it's, you gotta be careful how you state those words. And I just want for the record to let everybody know, that didn't happen with this. It's a whole different concern. And quite frankly, this council has never dealt with a matter like this of this magnitude. Well, millions.
Well, and.
12.5 million dollars. We've never dealt with anything like this to try to get it right.
Yeah.
And we just wanna make sure that everybody providing those services, like I just read, that's part of indigent care and a valuable component in our community that we're trying to address. And I get the feeling that we're not doing that. So we need to look at it and make sure if there's any question, we can cover those bases.
And, and, and Mayor, I do want the Deputy City Manager to make, um, comments, but the one thing I can assure you is that they follow the book.
We, we've got a couple of councilors that have been waiting in queue. Deputy City Manager, if you don't mind, let me get to them very quickly. Uh, Mayor Protem Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to clarify, I think, uh, City Attorney will agree with me. Just for the public's knowledge, no one at this table had anything to do with the 30-year contract that we had that started in, I believe, 92. So we didn't have a, we didn't have any involvement in that. City Manager was employed with the city, but he was not in the city manager's office. So I just wanted for the public's knowledge that we didn't have any engagement in that. I think City Attorney worked in the city attorney's office at the time, uh, that the contract was put in place and, at, during the 90s. But I just want everybody to know that that was the process. And the term mental health was brought up. I don't think that, that the term mental health was at a high level to then as it is today. So that, that may be why it wasn't discussed or mentioned specifically in the contract. Um, I, I think we do need more information, we need better understanding of. I, I think we do need more information, we need better understanding of how we're moving on this and what's involved in the process. So, I, I just wanted to clarify for the public's knowledge that, uh, who was involved and who voted on it in that, that time. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Barnes?
Um, I think Judy summed everything up, really, what we need to know the process. Because who are the people asking? They're asking us. So, we should know about that, that's one. And, um, there's an expression that there is no health without mental health. That's, and, and I've, I've been asked that, and it's my responsibility to bring an answer to it. So, not pointing fingers, I'm glad we're starting from ground zero. But to your point, yes, we need to know the process so we can answer, so we can give what we know. Now, you've heard, it's not just me, um, it's other members of the council as well. And so, once we get online with that, we're starting from ground zeros. And two, something that Glenn mentioned, he mentioned the fact of individual organizations that have done, and all of us know some of them, that have done over the long haul, taking care of the indigent. We want to make sure that they now know there's going to be a start point where they can apply. Because we're starting from ground zero.
Okay, thank you, sir. Deputy City Manager?
So, just wanted to make a few comments, and I hear everything that counsel's saying, and I completely understand and appreciate the position that you've been in. But I do want to just outline a few things. The presentation that I had today, that's on the city manager's agenda, really walked through the components of the RFP and how the development happened. And I'll go through that if counsel wishes to hear that or not. But, you know, we had 30 years of providing lump sum payments to one entity, and we heard counsel. We heard them say, we don't want to do it that way anymore. So, the RFP was developed based on reviewing other RFPs throughout the state and how they structured their indigent care programs. So, that's how our RFP was developed. And I will say, without talking specifically about the proposals that were submitted, not every proposal that was submitted could we negotiate a rate. Our request in the RFP was the rate would be a percentage of Medicaid rates. For example, if you had a service that paid at a Medicaid rate $20, we wanted to know, are you going to expect reimbursement at Medicaid rates or at 110% of Medicaid rates? Not every proposal that was submitted could we negotiate any kind of rate with them without mentioning any specific vendor. Also, not every provider that submitted a proposal displayed the capability and the ability to provide reporting and invoicing in the format that was requested. So, we felt that there were some that couldn't meet the expectations of the Finance Department and how they wish to reimburse those individual companies for indigent care. We weren't just going to write a check for $2 million and say, take care of the indigent. It was on a reimbursement basis. Not every provider displayed the ability to do that. Also, not every proposal submitted was for all services. Some proposals only wanted to do one particular service and would not provide a specific rate for that service. That's why the committee did not feel comfortable making a recommendation to counsel to fund that particular proposal. So, there are reasons that the only two vendors that were submitted were recommended by the committee, without getting into any more specifics. And I'll be happy to go through the requirements of the RFP I sent to counsel after the last meeting, the presentation, as well as the RFP, so you can see all the details, the information that we requested, the services, how to qualify individuals for the indigent care program, what the expectation was. We also met with each one of the, the entities that submitted a proposal. We had a Zoom meeting, we asked them to provide us a walkthrough tour, virtually, of the facility, that they would provide care to the indigent so that we could see, without taking a, an actual tour of their facility. Some of us were not familiar with everyone that submitted a proposal. So, we felt like we did a very thorough job in evaluating the proposals that were submitted to us. Granted, I expected to see a few others submit, but we worked with, there's deadlines in an RFP, I'm a rule follower. Till the day I die, I'm going to follow the rules. And we can only evaluate what is submitted to us by the deadline. And so, we're happy to review the RFP, change the RFP to meet the expectations of counsel. We are, we'll do whatever counsel desires us to do.
All right, restate the motion. Sandra, do you have the motion recorded?
Mayor, does that relate to the accounting of the money?
I think, I think it does.
I wanted to ask Ms. Hodge to comment on that. Didn't last year's 2.5 mils, that's reserved for...
It's in the indigent care fund, it's a special revenue fund, it can only be used for that purpose. But I do want to respond, one more item on the inmate. Part of the RFP process was treatment of inmates, and the rate to establish how those services would be billed to the city for treatment of in, of inmates. And so, that was part of what was recommended to counsel in the two vendors that submitted proposals. One of them would provide services to inmates at a particular rate. Without the RFP, it does not require that vendor to charge us a particular rate. So, when we receive the inmate invoice, I, I, I don't know what it will look like, and I don't know what rate, because there is no negotiated rate with them, and they're not required to charge us a particular rate, because there is no agreement in place with that vendor.
Just to be clear, you're, you're saying, if they submit us an invoice today, they may submit an invoice at, let's say, 110% or 120%?
300%.
300%. But with what we have brought forward is negotiated.
That's correct.
And they are limited in what they can invoice us, once we enter that agreement with them. And so, and you made the point about not revealing any information, some of the others that were interested. That, that we had a standard for charges that would, we would be able to control, and they did not submit or acknowledge. And if we went forward, then we would not have a cap on them.
That's correct.
And so, that, therefore, they did not meet the criteria, and you didn't bring them forward.
That's correct.
And so, I just want to be clear, like, we can, if, they can send us an invoice after tomorrow, today, and say, for inmate care, since we don't have a negoti- here's our invoice, and you need to pay us.
For these ser- for whatever service, you know, we'll validate the service.
Whatever that rate is, because we don't, we, we have not negotiated a rate or signed an agreement with them to cap them at a certain rate. And so, we are in a vulnerable position at this point. But we're going to do whatever counsel decides.
All right, Counselor Davis, go ahead, you stated the motion.
We don't, we don't need, Mayor, we don't need a motion on the accounting of the funds. They're already in a trust fund for indigent care. If you want to address the resolution on the table, that's all right.
I think that's what his motion was to, wasn't it?
Right. We don't. Can you explain that again?
Madam Clerk, if you would read through that motion that you had...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Davis made the motion to carry over the account of monies to 2024. And I believe that was in reference to the indigent care.
We don't, we don't need the motion, Mayor. It's already in a trust fund for indigent care. It can only be spent for those purposes, last year's and this year's.
So, it automatically carries over?
Yes.
Okay, well, Mr. City Manag- Manager, I, I would probably recommend going and sitting down. If you believe that there were services incurred based on our inmate care, like we've done in the past for years, then I think it's appropriate we pay our bill. Maybe sit down, have that conversation, and then come back to us and share us, with us, what, what was presented or what you've arrived at, and if you think it's fair or not. I mean, I think we can have that conversation, but I do believe we need to take care of that aspect of it. And you can make the argument, even though that, that the other healthcare, top-tier healthcare provider provides services as well to the, to the inmate. But, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to address that as we move forward into the future model that we can all agree on, that would, would help and assist and cover that.
We pay inmate, we pay inmate. We do pay inmate invoices, whether they're the inmate provider at the jail or if they have to take them to a dentist, for example, so those come in. But we have not received them for the entities that submitted a proposal, because it was part of that proposal.
You confused me. Have we already paid? Do we pay for these services, or is this above and beyond?
I think she's, you're making the point that if a particular hospital, someone provides a service, we pay them.
Yes.
You know, whether they are in, or part of...
So, we've already paid them?
No, 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 no. She's making the point that if they provide a service, let's say, someone who did not get recommended to you, and, and we take them to that provider for service, an inmate, we're going to pay that bill.
They've already been paid?
No.
They will be paid?
Yes.
Okay.
If we take them, we're asking them, provide this inmate dental service, because we can't, you know, our normal provider, it's outside of, then we're going to pay them.
So, it's the only difference that we now no longer have any control over what is being billed?
And, and so, what the counselor is asking me to do is go ahead and get with the ones who've incurred costs. And you're authorizing me to negotiate the cost, because we don't have a signed agreement that caps them or where we've negotiated.
I can include that in the motion, but I, I, I will yield to my council members how they feel about it. I'm just, I'm just one person, I don't want to make that decision.
Yeah, we're going to do whatever you...
If we need to do it, then, then I'm fine with that.
Well, is, the only motion that was on the table is unnecessary. So, unless there's another motion with regards to the, um, resolution. Do what now?
Rule the motion on the table out of order.
All right, it is, it is ruled out of order.
I would remove my motion.
All right, is, so is there a, y'all have lost me. Is there a, a, any kind of motion on the resolution?
I don't think we've had a motion yet. It's on the table, you can either table it, or you can take a vote.
Counselor Tucker? Well, I didn't hear it.
All right, item six then is tabled, no action today. The money remains in the indigent care trust fund for, from the previous fiscal year going forward. Mayor, the next item we've got is a resolution that will allow either competitive sale or negotiated sale of hospital authority of Columbus bonds. The market conditions were not favorable a few months ago when we were here with the finance experts, and we're asking for this flexibility. This will allow them either a competitive sale or a negotiated sale. We did have some folks here, Brett Hayes is still here, and Mr. Guephart from Davenport was here. But this is recommended by finance and is ready for action.
Motion second, approve the resolution, any discussion? All right, Chris, you can cue it. Counselors, you can register your votes. All right, it's approved.
All right, that has passed. Thank you, gentlemen, for your patience.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor, the only other item we would request, have several requests for executive session on litigation, potential litigation, real estate acquisition and disposal, and personnel, whenever counsel's ready for that. But that's all we had listed.
Okay. All right, we'll move forward to the public agenda. Remind everybody that you'll have five minutes to address counsel. And if you don't have enough time to get through what you want to talk about, you're welcome to come back at the end of the meeting after the clerk's agenda for an additional three minutes. And if you would, just come up and give your, your name and your state of residence is, is all we'll need at the podium today. First is Ms. Sarah Carter regarding the overgrown trees and bushes on the neighboring property. All right. All right, that was, that was resolved, I'm told, okay. Mr. Nicholas Guenter regarding a portion of Front Avenue block for construction purposes. And he canceled, okay? All right, that'll take care of the public agenda. Mr. City Manag- and the Miss City, City Manager was caught by surprise.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do have a few items on my agenda. The first item is a sat walk and maintenance easement acceptance and ask an approval for...
Motion second, approve item one, any discussion? Chris, if you'll put it on the screen, counselors, you can vote. Okay. That's approved.
And Mayor and counsel, on item two, I've got, I see that Kathy Williams is here, but this is a State of Georgia Department of Community Affairs Equity Fund Rural Workforce Housing Application for Neighbor Works. And we are asking counsel to approve a, or requesting you allow us to apply any for what it accept, State of Georgia Department of Community Affairs Equity Fund Rural Workforce Housing Initiative on behalf of Neighbor Works Columbus by the amount awarded.
All right, there's a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Okay, Counselor...
I'm really just here for any questions. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory. We're going to apply for this grant. It'll allow us to offset what we would use for the tax allocation district, so we won't have to use those funds if we're able to get this infrastructure grant. So, it's our, you know, it's our effort to try to alleviate the city's encumbering of the real estate taxes on Elliot's walk.
Counselor Grab?
And, and there is no financial impact to the city.
No, sir, it's all good stuff.
And you, there's no match required, you would take care of the match and all of everything that goes along with it.
That is correct.
Yes.
Chris, if you'll put that on the screen, we'll ask counselors to register their votes.
We do ask for fingers to be crossed.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, we appreciate it.
Thank you for being here, Kathy. And, and let me just say, Kathy, if you will come back, I don't know that you have appeared at this council since you were put on the Georgia Department of Transportation Board. Is, is that true? Is that right?
That's true.
And so, I, Mayor, I do think it would be proper and fitting to congratulate her,
Oh, thank you.
and she's going to represent us here.
Thank you. You know, I've, I, thank you very much. I've enjoyed the last, I guess it's four months now, um, serving the constituents of this community, as well as a much wider community in Congressional District Two. I've seen some absolutely beautiful countryside that I had never been in before. I've met some fabulous people, and I'm learning a lot about transportation. I've met some fabulous people and I'm learning a lot about transportation. And I look forward to working with each of you on your needs because that's what I am on the DOT Board. I'm your liaison. I'm your, um, your contact to apparently all things transportation. So I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're proud to have someone from Columbus, Georgia.
Absolutely.
On the Georgia Department of Transportation Board.
Counselor Davis?
And I wanted to say, I, I'm, I, I'm really excited about this and hope it goes through because I, I look at this as opening the door to continue the, the infrastructure progress and, and that development. But even if that doesn't happen, I, I would really encourage the city, there's got to be some ways that we can maybe take care, satisfy some of the debt or the liabilities with the infrastructure there and assist that in the long run would be beneficial to both parties. I believe that. I think it can be done, but hopefully we get this and, uh, we can continue, um, Neighbor Works and Elliot's Way, the growth there and continue the progress. Because I, uh, they're probably, I've driven by there a few times and it looks like they're probably going to be getting into the next phase soon. And, and, you know, we, we might want to try to find some creative ways to, to help that happen. Yeah.
Quickly address that. Thank you very much, Counselor. Uh, we do have $2.3 million in debt for that TAD. It's a difficult interest rate environment to be in right now and carry that debt. That's one of the reasons we are looking for this type of an opportunity with this grant. Uh, but you're right. Yes, sir. We, we are beginning Phase Two. As we speak, we've put up 21 homes in Elliot's Walk, 24 sale. One is Hal's House, which is the First Baptist Church home. And, um, I'm happy to tell you that all have sold except three. We have three left and they've just come out of the ground. So it's incredibly successful. It is the first significant single-family development in District Seven since, um, the end of Vietnam. So we're very proud of it. We invite all of you to come out and see it. Thank you very much, Counselor Davis.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Move to approve item three.
All right, motion second to approve item three. Any discussion? If you queue it, Chris, Mr. City Manager, if you'd walk through what that was.
Yes, uh, we have, uh, an anonymous donor, um, donating $500 to each of, well, three public safety agencies, the Police Department, Sheriff, Fire EMS, and, um, um, and it's just, um, it's, it's a gesture of special thanks, uh, to our public safety agencies. And, um, they just wanted to do something nice. And so, um, we appreciate citizens, um, organizations stepping up and, um, doing this kind of thing.
Okay, Counselor Davis, did you record your vote? I don't know if it's too late, but if you just add his clerk. All right.
So I've got a couple of, uh, purchases. Um, the first one is, uh, fu-, uh, fuel purchases.
We've got a motion to second to approve the purchases A through E. Is there one that anyone would like pulled for further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, Mr. City Manager, if you would explain those purchases, please.
Yes, I've got fuel purchases, uh, for fiscal year 24. You know, we go out and, um, get an average, um, a, a fuel price on a daily basis and we go with the best fuel price. And so they went through a process and, um, for Metro Public Works, Parks and Rec and others to make sure we get the best fuel price. Then we have federal and state mandated fees for, for the fiscal year to make sure that we get all those fees taken care of, uh, in a timely manner. And example of fees that we pay to the federal government or state would be air emission fees or state alternative fuel and highway impact fees, solid waste disposal fees and a number of others that we have to pay on an annual basis. Uh, and then for the Columbus Police Department, we've got Acts on Virtual Training System for the Columbus Police Department. Uh, and, um, this is a system that offers training for police officers on how to handle several different types of encounters with the public and suspects to include violent crime intervention. Uh, I've got Integrated Ballistic Identification System for the Police Department. Um, and, uh, and then, uh, E, I've got concrete slabs for exterior, uh, exercise equipment that will be for Britt David Park, Cooper Creek and Rigdon Park. Uh, those are, uh, the purchases. Uh, I've got a few updates, um, that I want to, uh, have, uh, with council, uh, today. Um, and, um, we will, um, get started with, um, our updates. Let's see. So the first one is City Hall. I've got Ryan Pruitt here. Uh, he's been, uh, providing updates on our progress at the new City Hall at every meeting and he is here today.
Uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Uh, good morning, Mayor Proton, members of council. Uh, just a real brief update, um, that come to every meeting just to keep everybody in the loop on the progress of, of relocations to City Hall. Um, so we still are in, in our Phase One moves. Um, again, uh, the building painted its certificate of occupancy June 9th. Starting the week of June 19th, we started moving departments. You can see all those departments, the IT, Finance, Cooperative Extension, Job Training, Parks and Recreation and the Human Resources Department have moved into City Hall and are open for business at time. They still, uh, are unpacking, so it is still a, a work in progress, but they are there and open for business. Um, some additional, uh, parks, the Parks and Recreation Department are moving this week and then later on this week into early next week, the Mayor's Office, City Manager's Office, City Attorney, Clerk of Council and 311 are scheduled to move and then they will open, um, next week at City Hall. So here's just a chart saying that same thing. Again, all those departments on the top half have relocated uh, and are now open at City Hall. Phase Two, uh, again, Senovis will vacate the Executive Building, uh, July 31 of 2024. Some renovation work will occur until early 2025. And then all of these departments, um, will, will shuffle again in 2025. I did want to bring one issue that we've been, uh, experiencing, uh, at the facility to your attention. These are some pictures from, um, the stairwell in the parking garage. Since the stairwell is, uh, open to the public, we, um, are accessible to the public. We have had some issues with trash and, uh, some other problems in the stairwells and other parts of the garage. And, um, we do anticipate this being a, an issue, um, as it's open to the public. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Kogel?
Can you remind us, uh, mostly just because I know that several of my constituents are watching, um, when the parking deck is expected to be open?
So we are anticipating it opening in August. I don't have an exact date yet. We are, there's a little bit of work we got to do in there. Um, so as soon as that work's completed, we will get it opened up.
Thank you. Uh, if there are no other questions, mayor, um, we will go to our next one then. Next, I've got, uh, Zoe Hightower.
Wait a minute, we do have a few that popped up. Counselor Barnes?
Thank you for, um, last night. I really appreciate that. Got some feedback from, um, Candace. Um, got with some, a lot of good information. When we do have our discussion, was that the, uh, the last Tuesday in August when we covered a lot of the things with inspection and codes? The two individuals that were there, were they, were, were they be in attendance?
Yes, the, the representatives from Public Works.
Yes. It was, it cleared up a lot of, um, issues that we had. And I appreciate you and, and the two individuals taking the time and sitting down and explaining to us, um, how things actually work. And I, and I know with the other council members, I know there's some gray areas that day, but you, you definitely took the time to clear that. I want to thank you and, and thank them.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, um, in reference to Phase Two, so we're saying that no other departments, um, within the Government Center will be moving into the Senovis building. Only the ones that we have listed right now are the ones that's moving in this Phase One.
Yes, that's correct. All of the departments, um, remaining at the Government Center are judicial court-related departments. So those will all be in the new Judicial Center.
Did we have any departments that had significant, um, issues? Because I know we had some, I guess, like indoor flooding plumbing and some of those issues are, did we consider like moving the ones that actually had the most severe issues in the Government Center first?
So.
You, you mean, you, the flooding that occurred in the Government?
I know, I know some of it was in the court, right?
Yes, uh, and, you know, probate and, uh, the ninth floor, several courts, but we took care of that, right?
Yes, yeah, everybody in the Government Center's operational, the intent is to keep the court-related functions on that campus for security reasons. Um, instead of splitting them out over town, you know, makes it a little bit tougher to secure. So all of them, you know, will be on that campus until the new building is done.
Yeah, and then, but I, I don't know of any issues that they are having at this point and all of that was rectified. Uh, and, and of course, all of them will be in the new Judicial Center.
I just, I'm asking because that was one of the main questions is if the Government Center was the main issue, why weren't those entities relocated, you know, with this first phase? That was just a question that some of the constituents had asked.
Yeah, and, and those entities, just, you know, for those watching, will not move out of the Government Center until they move into, into the new Judicial Center. And then the tower, Government Center Tower will be demoed at that time. So they'll move out of there into the actual new building. Yeah.
And then one more question. Um, since Phase One will be completed soon, um, what would be the next step in reference to, I guess, I know you said the old Parks and Rec office would be available for council. Um, that's one and two in reference to parking. Do you have to get with the sheriff in order for him to, um, do the, the parking for council?
You know, they are, I know that Deputy City Manager Goodwin is working with the sheriff now and I've had conversations with her about the parking here. And, um, um, and, and I know the plan is that they are going to designate parking for councilors here. And, and you'll probably, I'm sure, will have designated parking at the new building also, at the new City Hall also.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton? Ms. Allen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sidebar. I wanted to ask the clerk if she would, uh, put me down. I had to step out for a minute. Um, Ed, Ed Me is voting in favor of the City Manager's agenda items one through three and for the purchases A through E. Thank you.
Counselor Tucker?
One last thing. Um, Counselor Davis had requested back on May 30th, um, in reference to the operation budget. I don't know, did you receive that or were you asking for it to be, um, a presentation? The request was insight on carrying the operation budget. Will we be closing other buildings? Um, he would like to see the numbers. Did you get that information?
And, and let me just, yeah, uh, let, let me just say that, um, I started that referral list of things that you, we can keep track. And, uh, and some of them will be carried over until staff follow up and complete them and then that's when they will come off. So, um, you know, as they are on there, um, you will be getting feedback, uh, you know, still working on it. But we wanted to track it so that nothing gets lost. And so I started that, um, that process.
And, and that was the thing. I know I was couns-, I meant speaking to, um, Lindsay early, earlier because I had asked, um, them to print this out because we, it is a lot of moving pieces, you know, going on. And sometimes things do kind of get lost or put in the back of our minds. But even on number four, um, Counselor Thomas, um, requested information in reference to the main entrance, um, to the City Hall. I know you was talking about, I guess, I can't think of the term that you had used, um, in reference to a person sitting there and they're going to be able to see.
Oh, the, uh, concierge?
Concierge, yeah. Um, but what I would, would request is if, if we're going to do, because this is great. Thank you, um, for, for doing this. But if we're going to do it, when, we need a, something that shows like, uh, uh, like a final, you know, thing. Um, because we still have the Mayor's Summer Youth Program that was number one, that Counselor Davis had asked. Um, can we partner with community members and businesses to have kids or adults come in and beautify their businesses? I don't know if that was addressed because it still says, uh, response is expected soon. So if the response has been updated, you know, provide like final, you know, final determination or something and add in a, a comment. Y'all know I used to be IT, so I used to do, um, trouble tickets and I'm just going back into my information technology mind. But I do think that if we're going to do this, we need to follow through with it and update it. So update it, um, and that was one of the things that Lindsay asked, um, today was do we want this printed out every time? Yes, if it's updated. But I don't want to waste paper. If we're going to do something like this, it's, it's a good process. But if we don't follow through, it's kind of not a good process. So.
Okay, any other questions of, um, Ms. Pruitt?
No, sir.
Uh, next I've got, uh, Zoe Hightower, who's our Family Connection Director. And, and let me just say that, um, Zoe is, this is her first time appearing, uh, before, uh, this body. And, uh, she's one of our young millennials and we're proud of the work that she's doing. Uh, but she is going to talk to you today, uh, about, uh, the Navigator Program. Um, the mayor and I were in Athens some time ago and we saw that they have a program that they fund out of their city budget. Uh, and it's, uh, right at a million dollars a year that they fund and they have like 19, uh, mayor, I believe, 19 navigators. And of course, we wanted to create something similar to what they're doing, but not as large as what they're doing. And, um, and, uh, we wanted it to serve as all of Columbus. And, um, we, um, uh, wanted to use ARP funds. And when the ARP allocations, uh, came forward, it was part of the allocations that, that you approved. And, uh, and so it would be a test program for three years. Uh, we, 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 we did enough out of the ARP allocation to do it as a pilot for three years. And if it works, it works. And if it doesn't, then it wouldn't be something we would ask come out of the city's budget. But none of these dollars are out of the city bu- budget, they're ARP dollars. And so Zoe Hightower, um, would you tell us what you have for us today?
Yes, sir. Um, thank you for that introduction. Good morning, everyone. As the City Manager said, my name is Zoe Hightower. For those of you who do not know me, I am the Director for Family Connection here in Columbus. And as of July 1st, um, I've officially been in this position for a year. Um, so for those of you who don't know what Family Connection is, Family Connection is a statewide initiative that's in all 159 counties within the state of Georgia. Um, it was implemented in the nineties by Governor Zell Miller after there was a national survey done and Georgia was ranked, uh, 48 out of 50 states for the overall well-being of children. Um, so as a way to combat this, Family Connection was started and they took, um, 10 counties, 10 pilot counties, in which Muskogee County was a part of, um, that pilot group. Um, and they created a framework, um, to where they wanted to measure how, um, healthy children were, how they were, uh, prepped for school, ready for school, uh, families were thriving and, uh, self-sufficient and communities were stable. Um, so here in Columbus, Muskogee County, we mimic that framework by coming up with our own annual plan each year. Um, two of the main focus of our, focuses of our annual plan this year is early childhood literacy and community health. Um, another component of Family Connection that's in each county is, uh, collaborative. Um, some of you may be familiar with what a collaborative is, but for those of you who don't know what it is, it's a general consensus of individuals that represent local organizations and agencies that will come together once a month to kind of sit down and brainstorm, um, the state of our city in different ways to combat the problem areas. Um, I'm hoping that we'll be able to pick back up with our collaborative meetings starting next month. Um, another component of each Family Connection county is the board. Uh, my board is spearheaded by uh, Ashley Becker, who represents the Columbus, Georgia Chamber. My vice board chair, Brandy Talbert, who I think she had uh, had to leave. Uh, but she is from the Literacy Alliance and then Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge, who is our secretary treasurer. Um, board members serve a two-year term and they are um, appointed by the, appointed by a nominating committee. And then after that is um, sent to the board, the board mentions it's the collaborative and then it's voted on at a later date. Um, as you all can see, we have a pretty diverse board. Um, representative from Valley Healthcare, the library, the school district. And just a group of individuals who are truly dedicated to the work and the um, overall well-being of Columbus, Muskogee County. Um, so far, we do have a vision and mission uh, for Co- um, Columbus Family Connection. Uh, we envision a Columbus where families have access to resources, to tools that promote. Healthy living, positive relationship and development of skills that can help them thrive. Um, our mission is that through collaboration, we can create a community of healthy children and families that are supported with the necessities to thrive. Uh, we also have goals that we like to uh, make sure that we're aware of. When we're doing the different plannings to make sure that we're aligned with. Um, we wanna make sure that we cultivate and strengthen uh, partnerships through collaboration. We wanna ensure that we provide trainings and education, not only to members of the community. But but also our board, our community leaders, to make sure that everyone is staying on top of the needs and problem areas. Um, better understand and utilize data and also monitor progress and analyze data. Um, again, I mentioned some of our focuses are early childhood literacy, um, third grade reading and overall community health. Uh, we wanna work with partners and residents to complete and evaluate a need assessment. And then we also want to implement implement the neighborhood navigators program. Um, as the city manager mentioned, uh, this is a pilot program um, that we are kind of mimicking what is being done. In the Athens Clark County area, um, so the goal of the neighborhood navigators is to empower individuals. And communities by helping them navigate the problem areas and seeing what what the issue is, what the disconnect is. Of why they don't have access to these resources in the first place. Um, I've been in contact with the director who is over that program in Athens Clark County named Harris. Um, so I wanna get a better understanding of how they implemented the program there. What works, what doesn't work and how that can be translated here in Muskogee County. Um, so how it will work is, we would um, essentially look for uh, for full-time individuals. Who will um, go out into the community, see what the problem areas are, see what the needs are. So that we can be um, increase community engagement, increase compu- uh, community empowerment. And just have a better um, a better connection with our citizens. Um, and I also want them to connect with you guys as well, because you all know your constituents, you guys have an idea of what the problem areas are. And things of that sort, so I would like for them to work closely with you all as well. Uh, we have already posted the job posting, it was posted on the sixteenth of June. Um, that same day, the news reached out, they picked it up, did a feature story on the news. Um, within the first week, we had thirty-six applicants and as of this morning, I think we have about fifty-two applicants. So there is a need and there is enthusiasm for this program, so I'm hoping that we can get it to translate over. Um, by the end of the ARPA funding in twenty twenty-six. And these are just some of the things that with collaboration, myself, my board and the navigators hope to accomplish. Uh, we want to um, do community health and resource fairs, which I know is being done in the community already. But I wanna make sure that everybody is having access to these resources, are they being done in the correct areas? Do the people who really need these health and resource fairs, do they have access to get to them? Um, we also want to do voter registration, but not just voter registration, voter education. Uh, when it comes to presidential election, local election, school board, anything pertaining to that sort. And we also wanna do uh, things like adult reading clubs. Like I said, our focus is early childhood literacy, but if children don't see the adults around them reading, they're gonna be less inclined to read as well. Um, and these are just a few of the things that we're hoping to get um, up and running with Family Connection. And these are just some of the partners that we plan on collaborating with, um, some of them we've already been working with. I did wanna mention a few upcoming events that we have, first we have this upcoming Friday, the mayor summers. The um, mayor's summer reading club, it's the second installment. Um, the first installment went really well, the mayor came out, read to the kids, we had bouncy houses, other vendors came out and it was just a great time. Um, this time we will have the chatter hoops and the co- um, Columbus sponsors coming out to read to the children this Friday at the Mildred Terry Library. And this is in partnership with Literacy Alliance and the uh, mayor's office. We also have coming up on July twentieth, the Positive Parents Panel, which is a collaboration with the Boys and Club and. Boys and Girls Club and their Teen Leadership Summit. Um, this is the opportunity for parents to come out, get more information uh, about the resources in the community. And also just engage in conversations with other adults, um, to see if they're having the same issue with their kids and things of that sort. Um, I did mention having a kickoff collaborative meeting, like I said, we're shooting for next month sometime. And I want you all to come out to that meeting as well. Um, and lastly, something that I'm working on with Community Reinvestment and Literacy Alliance. Is a citywide book draft that we're planning to do from um, August to September. Um, and I want a lot of the different departments and divisions around the city of Columbus to participate in. Um, as you may or may not know, Literacy Alliance has community book nooks located in different areas of the community. And they're funded by CDBG funding uh, from Community Reinvestment. So our goal is to replenish the books that are being taken away from these book nooks. Um, because we all know that literacy and education is the cornerstone for development. And um, this gives us the opportunity to add brick to that foundation. Um, and this is just a way to contact me, we do post updates on our Facebook page, whether it's resources from ourself. Or other um, entities within the city as well, um, that's all I have, so, no questions.
Very good presentation, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you for your presentation. It seems like a lot of the things that you're doing are duplicates of what's already. Um, happening in the government in different departments, for example. Um, Nancy Bourne does a great job about um, the voter registration and voter education. So I'm not sure why we're duplicating that. And the navigator program. I'm sorry, that sounded like a description of my job as a city councillor. And so I don't understand why um, the navigator program is is necessary.
I know in in Athens, it's working exceptionally well, it's not, it's not an instead of, it's it's in addition to. It's to try to create a little bit broader capacity and in Athens, it's worked amazingly. Because they they work with the council, they also have an opportunity to contact the mayor directly. Uh, and and what they've been able to do in Athens is identify some of the areas that, you know, you kind of hear about. But you've got all these other things that you're working on, it just, sometimes it doesn't, you don't get to that point. I I think it's an incredible program and we brought it back from Athens, uh, we were excited about it. And city manager said, I'm gonna find the money somewhere for us to try to give it a try and see how it works here.
Well, why is this the first, if if it's an enhancement? And it's, and then why is this the first time we're hearing about it? It, I mean, she said that she's about to have her, are you, have you been employed for a year?
In this position, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And this is the first we're hearing of?
Let me just say.
Well, this is, I will say that there's a lot of initiatives that get vetted and we kind of work through. And and I don't think every one of them comes to council, cause they don't come to fruition. Uh, so it's it's a matter of try, and when when we get ready and I think when staff gets ready. I hadn't heard about it since we went, we went to to Athens, we'd been back a week, so.
Well, she's been working to develop the program, mayor, and it's it's about getting out into the council districts. And connecting uh, people to resources or making sure they know what resources are available to them. And it's really going to benefit those who are not as informed. And uh, it's all about families and children. And uh, yes, uh, there are some other things in the ARP money. Where you're gonna be hearing those or seeing those programs being brought forward to you uh, over the next few weeks. And um, and so, yeah, she's been employed a year, but this is not what she's been working on for a whole year. She's been, and and there's a family connection director in every, I think, every county in Georgia. And so uh, we are providing, uh, want to provide to families and children in Muskogee County. Exactly what they're providing for family and children in other county, in fact, I sent you a a thing on, it was on Channel Eight News last night. Where the Harris County Family Connection person will work in this pack the backpacks or whatever.
Yes, sir, so, i- and yes, sir, and um, you mentioned duplicating things that are already being done. Uh, for example, schools coming up, there are about to be how many back-to-school drives within the community? But but that's not going to stop these organizations and agencies from having these back-to-school drives, it's about accessibility. Does everybody have access to these back-to-school drives? It's happening in this area, but do citizens in these areas have access to these school drives as well? Can they drive to these areas or can we bring these things to them as well? Um, and even outside of Family Connection, there are quote-unquote duplicate things that are happening in the community. But it's all about making these things more accessible um, to families and children.
Yeah, and and also, the 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 state's in you some backpacks?
Yes, um, last year I received um, six hundred, seven hundred book bags. Uh, of those six hundred are in English and one hundred are in Spanish, so we are coming up with a plan to distribute those book bags. Um, I know Ms. Lisa reached out to me last week, uh, we're gonna start distributing some of those. Um, they have information inside of them, different resources for children and families. Um, and I also um, got some supplemental materials as well, such as calculators, um, first aid kits to go inside of these book bags as well. Um, so that's just another way we can be different, some people may not be giving away book bags. Or they may just be giving away book bags but not supplies, so.
Yeah, and you have both?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, Counselor Huff?
Director Hightower, thank you so much for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Um, make sure you let us know when you get your partners together.
Yes, sir.
So that we can come out. I did a lot of this, I guess, when I first started back in twenty twelve, thirteen timeframe. And coming in to see, and it's it's something to behold. Because I I I had been to one, I think there were probably close to twenty-five or thirty partners in the room. Everybody was sharing information on how to help. Uh, my main point this morning that I wanna harp on is the third grade reading. Uh, whatever it takes, partners, I've worked with a lot of the people on your board over the years in these organizations. But uh, I see public safety here, uh, it makes their jobs easier. Uh, if we get the kids reading in third grade and doing well in school. Uh, don't know if it's still true, but when I came on board, there were uh. Stats saying that they were building future prisons based on third grade.
Yes.
Test scores.
Yes, third grade is a very important earmark in a child's life that determines the success of a child in the future.
Well, continue that and keep up the good work, uh, let me know how I can help.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and make sure we get the message now so we can come out and support you.
Yes, sir, you'll get it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Counselor Tucker?
Um, yes, how how is the um, Family Connection structure? Is that under the state or under the city? Is it a?
So it's both, so we have to answer to the state and with the city being the fiscal agent. I essentially have to answer to the um, city as well.
So your budget come from the state?
Yes.
Okay, and in reference to Athens, um, it looks, and I'm just saying what it looks like. It looks like the fam- Family Connections, um, the neighborhood leaders. Fall under the Family Connection um, umbrella.
Yeah.
So, so is it written up? Cause right now, it appears based on, like if you go out and look at the job announcement, that they fall under you as the city manager.
No.
But that's what it says on the job application, like it's saying city manager.
Yeah, it's it's housed, she's housed in my department, but over the years and Family Connection has been, I guess. Twenty-plus years with the city, but um, it it but it was not under a particular department. And so there, I don't wanna get into the issues, but we had to 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 take charge and so.
And that's the reason why I was asking, why is it housed under?
Yeah.
The city manager, is this a state entity?
Well, well, the city provides some funding, but her her primary funding comes from the state. And uh, and so when we had to locate it somewhere. Because I was involved when they were going to take the funding away and discontinue us in Muskogee County. It was not a part of, it was a nonprofit. And because we're the fiscal agent, we said, we'll we'll take it. Cause we, we're not gonna be the only county in the state of Georgia without uh, a family connection. And so it's just housed in my office.
And and I will, will say, one of the concerns, and it's not um, just uh, Counselor Crabbe. But far as duplication of efforts, um, cause we got two-one-one. And working with, um, and I will say this, when I work as a um, a case manager. For the SSVL program, and it's for veterans, um, in the homeless community. It does get confusing, like who do you call? So we're gonna start directing people to call you, Neighborhood Navigators. And then possibly two-one-one, it's it's gonna be a flow, like who who do you contact? And what are you doing to ensure that, you know, the right hand knows what the left hand is doing? And it's not a lot of confusion, because oftentimes, we do have, especially if we're talking about using city funds. Let's use our funds wisely, because we don't wanna, yes, more, more sometimes is better, but then more can be confusing. It can get real, it can get real confusing real quick when you're talking about doing efforts. Especially some of the things when when you're saying, like I I do town halls. Cause cause my my district uh, warrior out there, he makes sure, he wants me to be out, out in the community. And I'm actually doing a senior citizens event on April, I mean, on August twenty-first at Shirley B. But when the navigator isn't working with the council, and even though you're saying like you want to add that that connection. If it's not written and it's not planned, then it's just, it will end up being an afterthought, afterthought. And that's one of the concerns, is keeping the council engaged if you're gonna be in the districts. You know, because I will say, say this, my district is like my children. Their districts are my nieces and nephews. And that's, and that's how how we, we are very territorial of our districts. So I don't go in Pop's district and try to do anything unless I contact Pops. And I don't get on Sh- in Charmaine district unless I contact Charmaine, Joanne, Bruce or whoever. We are very territorial on our districts, so when you're talking about doing things and, I'm I'm just being honest. But when you're talking about doing things, yeah, when you talk about doing things and then the council's not involved and you're planning town halls. Because what the constituents wanna know is what that councillor is gonna say, cause that's what Mr. Willie Bellfield said, he didn't wanna hear from. All these other entities, he wanna hear from the council.
I I, we understand.
Counselor Davis?
Thanks, mayor, and I can. I can see the concern about duplication and efforts with all the, whether it's two-one-one, three-one-one, the mayor's less talk. We're, council members are engaged out there, you have a school district representative, there's a lot of things going on that's out there. So I I mean, I'm open-minded, I'd like to have maybe, probably not today, but sit down and have that conversation. Understand more in detail the mechanics, I I'm, you know, I'm a little here, sitting here, the mechanics. Of how this all connects, you know, but but I I do uh, understand the concerns of my. And and might share some same concerns as my fellow colleagues, I I I would ask this question though. We said this is something new, but uh, you know, and and it's coming out of the ARP funds. I thought we designated all the ARP funds, that's already been done. Is there like a discretionary aspect to the ARP money at all, I mean, that?
We we brought you the whole list. All-inclusive, this was on the list.
Okay, all right, and that, that's recent, right?
That was back when we, you approved the list.
And that's been how long?
Whatever, I don't know the date when you approved the ARP list, but when you approved the whole list of items, this is one of the items.
No, I'm just asking, cause I'm.
And Counsel Tucker was one of the supporters of this program.
And that's what I would say, just get council involved.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm asking, I just, I remember we had a lot of conversations on dealing with affordable housing and things of that nature and all. I di- I didn't know what, where it was coming out, but you say there was already a line item.
They're telling me December of twenty-two is when you approved the list.
Okay, okay, all right, well, that, that helps me.
Sure. Thank you, Zoe, and we appreciate your work and all that you're doing for the city government. Yeah, great job. Um, next, I've got the public safety take-home vehicles to Alabama update. Uh, we've got our new risk manager, Lauren Vance, congratulations on your new assignment.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and so Lauren is gonna talk to you about that.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As Mr. City Manager said, I am pretty new to the risk manager position. However, I have been employed with risk management for three years, and I have been with the, uh, City of Columbus for a little over twenty. Today, we are going to be talking about public safety vehicles going to Alabama. Some of the things that we are going to discuss are the, uh, risk for allowing those vehicles to Alabama, insurance policies, other cities and counties, and how they are handling the same situation, and our options moving forward. The sovereign immunity that we are under currently for the OCGA guidelines are for motor vehicle accidents only in Georgia. Alabama does not recognize our immunity. Thank you. Does not recognize our immunity, and therefore, the caps for the OCGA guidelines would be waived. The potential for our exposure would go well above the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar caps if there is an accident in Alabama. One of the other questions that we had was if we could purchase insurance for the vehicles. We did look at that, and if the insurance is purchased for the fourteen-hundred vehicles that we have in our fleet, our immunity is still waived and our exposure is open. If we purchased a insurance policy for the same amount as our caps for that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, a court verdict, of course, could go well above that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that is now protecting us in Georgia. We did reach out to our legal outside team, our insurance brokers, GMA and ACCG, and they are all recommending to stay self-funded and to not purchase that insurance. For the OCGA guidelines, it is actually broken down. Five-hundred-thousand dollars per person per accident, seven-hundred-thousand dollars for two or more people per accident, and fifty-thousand dollars property damage per accident. Even though there are some benefits to allow public safety employees into Alabama, we also have to look at the risk, and of course, the main ones being that our immunity would be waived and our caps would be exposed. We contacted eighteen different cities and counties that are on the Georgia border with another state. Uh, this is the list that we really focused on. Uh, as you see, it is split. There are four that allow city vehicles into a different state. Then there are four that are not allowed into states. For the, uh, City of LaGrange, they are self-funded and they do allow vehicles into the state lines. However, they assume that risk. They, the immunity is waived, they know that, and they're just going to take that risk if something happens in Alabama. Augusta, Richmond is another one, they are very similar to Columbus. They are self-funded. However, they do not allow city vehicles into South Carolina, but their sheriff is allowed to write his own policies, and he does allow deputies into another state. Currently, there are ninety potential.
So, let me just say, so, the sheriff can make the decision to allow them to go because the sheriff is a constitutional officer.
That is correct.
And, um, and it's not necessarily governed by what a Rich, uh, Augusta Richmond says.
Correct, he does not have to abide by this.
But, of course, Augusta Richmond would assume the liability
That is correct.
if something occurs.
Correct.
Just wanna be clear.
Yes, ma'am, Counsel Thomas?
And in Muskogee County, who owns the sheriff's cars?
It would be the city.
So, they're driving city vehicles into South Carolina and into Alabama? Thank you.
Chris, turn that light back on, please. Thank you.
Currently, there are ninety employees throughout the public safety departments that have the potential to take home a vehicle into Alabama. Uh, Columbus Fire and EMS has six employees that are currently residing in Alabama. This does not mean that they are taking those vehicles home currently. This is the potential that they have to do so. Um, Police Department, of course, has forty-five. Emergency Management and Muskogee County Prison have two employees, and the Sheriff's Office has thirty-five employees. The options that we have decided would be the best to consider. Number one would be leave the policy as is. The employees would not be allowed to go into Alabama. We would re- maintain our immunity and we would maintain our caps. Option two, amend the policy. We would continue to be self-funded, allow the employees into Alabama for public safety only. And we would assume the risk if anything were to happen in Alabama. Option three would be to purchase insurance. However, again, you are going to waive the immunity. The caps could be much higher if we were to go to court, if we get sued. We could possibly look at multimillion-dollar verdict instead of a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar verdict. Option four, leave the policy as is and provide a stipend for those employees that live in Alabama to substitute not allowing that vehicle to go home with them. Just to recap, if we were to go to Alabama, if we allow public safety employees into a state that does not recognize our immunity, we waive that immunity, we waive our caps, and we are going to have to assume the risk that comes along with an accident happening in that state. Uh, the current caps, again, it's five-hundred-thousand per person per accident, seven-hundred for two or more people per accident, and fifty-thousand dollars for property damage. And we did contact eighteen cities and counties. Four do allow take-home vehicles into another state. Six do not allow vehicles into another state. And there were eight that did not have employees living in another state and are not concerned of their immunity.
Excuse me, Lauren, Counsel Crabbe?
Thank you. Um, does our, does our take-home car policy, um, apply to all employees or just law enforcement?
The take-home policy is for all employees. And it was amended in twenty-twenty.
Okay, and then, can you tell me the number of accidents that have occurred, um, for, over the last year or per year of these take-home po- these take-home cars? How many have been in it?
I can pull the information.
How many have been in an accident?
I can pull the information and get it to you, I don't have it readily available.
I mean, that would've been a good be- bit of information to, um, assess the risk of our decision. You know, if we're having a lot of, um, accidents, then our decision may be different than if we have maybe one accident a year. That, that is part of the risk assessment. So, that's a big po- part of information that we're missing.
So, your question, uh, just to, to be clear, you want to know, um, how many accidents occur while they were off-duty in a take-home vehicle, or?
Mm-hmm, because we're, because we are, you know, going to be making this decision based on the risk of allowing them to take cars over to Alabama. And if we look at how many accidents have occurred, you know, over the last two to five years, and it's low, then we realize that our risk of doing this is less than if we're having a lot of accidents every year. That's, that's a, I'm just really surprised that that piece of information wasn't part of your presentation, because that is a big piece of information that we would, in, in order for us to make our decisions.
I'm not surprised that that's not a part of her information, you know? I think she came with.
Well, I, I, let's just, if you can, let's get it and
Sure.
try to get it spun out, and then we can kinda take a look at it.
So, so, what, what I hear being asked is, and I don't even know that you track it like this. Um, and so, what, what I hear being asked is that if a person has a take-home vehicle and an accident occurs while they're at work, you track that. But then, when they're off work, a public safety person, and they're en route home or en route to work before they go in service, do you track those kinds of accidents?
Not necessarily when they're off-duty, because.
That's, that's my point, I'm not.
Because we haven't had a claim.
Oh, we have, yes, ma'am, we have.
How many claims have we had? That's what I'm asking.
However, you have to understand, though, public safety is going to tell you they are always on duty. They are always on duty, they are always working. If they come up on an accident, if they come up on a scene, they're working, they're gonna turn those lights on, they're going to go into work. They're not off. So, for us to track certain information, it would be a little difficult to, to, uh, we can give you the amount of accidents.
Yeah.
We can, we can pull that all day long.
But, but, but you're not gonna have it when they are
Off-duty and on-duty.
off-duty in, in the vehicle. I don't believe you track it like that.
We do not, we do not.
Counsel Kogle?
Good, uh, and just a, uh, just off of Counsel Crabbe's comment. So, if, if you can pull that data, then can you also, because at one point, police and fire, we used to be able to, or they used to be able to take them home, correct?
Police and fire?
The service vehicles at one point were able to be taken home off-duty, correct?
Not, not to Alabama.
Not to ever, in the history of ever?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Well, just separate it then from before two thousand twenty-one, it was amended to, and, um, and on.
Say that again, yeah?
To what?
Or, I guess, never, I guess, uh, just disregard my, my comment, if it was never allowed.
Yeah.
Okay, Counsel Begley?
Um, I would like to suggest the option number five. I think we could get a, a group together, um, someone from fire, BM, um, someone from police, someone from sheriff, uh, Lauren, and then someone from city council that kinda brings up the questions that we had. Just to spend some deep dives, really understand how LaGrange got comfortable with the risk, uh, understanding, you know, look at, talk, talking to John King, the insurance commissioner, is there a way to work with Alabama? Just to, I think it is a big decision, and there's, there's no real obvious answers. So, I think getting some more time where city council has one person involved, we're digging, I like a lot of this information, using the same information, but just really digging deeper, because it is a, a tough decision with not a clear answer.
Well, and just to add to it, I know we had sent a, uh, request for, um, legis- well, not legislation, but for a resolution out of the Senate to su- uh, support our Attorney General communicating with Alabama's Attorney General. And that, for the first time, actually got dropped and made it to the Attorney General's office. He's called, he's been in communication, uh, he's got somebody that is working on it with Lucy, I believe, to try to create, to try to create that communication with the Alabama AG. You know, the challenge is, is we've told them whichever they can do quicker. If they can do just our border, that's great. If they wanna tackle all border cities or just a distance from the, the, the border, whatever they wanna do. But we've finally gotten them in Atlanta to understand this is of significant importance to us. So, uh, so that's, that's in the mix to your, to your point. Um, Counsel Hough?
Yes, to piggyback on what I've been stated already, uh, when you get the groups together from the different departments, uh, to, I'm looking at option two, uh, excuse me, where it says amend policy, stay self-funded, allow public safety employees to Alabama, potentially at risk for liability. Is there a, a risk calculation or something that you'll use during these meetings to say what our exposure would be?
We can get that, we have not dove that far into what the exposure would be. That would take some, some legal team and our insurance brokers. Uh, I can tell you that there are some of the ninety employees, they are in the thirty-five to forty-mile radius. So, they would be traveling quite a bit into Alabama. It's not just going across the bridge. So, of course, the longer you travel, the more your exposure is open, the, the worse the liability could be.
So, for the ones that have done it in the past, or, or, I should say, are doing it now, uh, do they have any numbers and things that would be helpful to us?
The cities that are currently going into Alabama, uh, not really. When we talked to them and met, they are, they pretty much just assume the risk and they, they wait for something to happen. I hate to say it that way, that's a, that's a bad response, but they wait for something to happen. Luckily, right now, the numbers that we have from them, nothing has happened.
Okay, okay, so, based on what I've heard, I guess we, you'll put together a group and get some information flowing so we can find out.
So, so.
See how to proceed. Go ahead.
That was his number five, I believe, I just wanna be clear on what.
I was adding a suggestion number five, uh, getting a group, police, sheriff, someone from city council. I, I, I think Lauren's, Lauren's already got a good information, so include her as well. Uh, and like I said, try to reach out to this, our state representatives. Uh, I was talking to Randy Robertson, he suggested John King, um, or, or a- anywhere else. But I think just deep dive into how LaGrange got comfortable, understanding how valuable the benefits are. Um, I, I just think it's, it's worth more time deep diving into those questions.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Option five is good to add. I just want, once you get into option five in a full discussion, I'd like to know, you know, basically from them, how option two applies.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Thomas?
Um, when I first looked at this presentation, the thing that just jumped out at me was on the very first slide that you have, uh, the, the title slide, you talk about, um, reducing transferring and avoiding risk. And then, you talk about accepting risk. Risk being the operative word, if you will. My concern with this presentation and with the, uh, current, uh, policy out there is that you did not look to see, how can we do this? You looked to see, how can we not do this? And that's what has come across in this presentation. I will tell you that there is much more to this question than how much insurance is it gonna cost us. Um, I will remember, and perhaps some of the other councils will remember, uh, a couple of weeks ago, when we talked about this, Counsel Garrett said, if you are a Muskogee, if you are a resident of Muskogee County and you are a public safety officer, and you have a wreck that is your fault, it is your responsibility and your insurance has to pay for it, is that true?
It can be.
In other words, it is true?
It can be, we have, right now, we're covering them. For example, a couple of years ago, we had an off-duty police officer going to a job in Harris County, and she caused a wreck. She hit a motorcycle and put the man in the hospital for months. But we covered it. We assumed that risk.
Do the officers who work for the Columbus Police Department know that if they have an accident, they are subject to having to pay for it with their own personal insurance? Do they know that?
I can't answer that. I don't know if they know that or not.
Yeah, I didn't think you could. Um, the goal, it seemed, a- as I said, seems to be, don't allow this to happen. I, I, I wanna, I, I wanna bring an example to you, and I know that you couns- if you can't tell, I'm pretty passionate about this. I think you counselors know, suppose we hired a, a officer who's twenty years old. We hired a brand-new rookie. And we train him, we have been told time and time again by everybody and their brother that our training department in the Columbus Police Department is the best in the state. It's terrific. And we train people all the time. Okay, so this kid, this twenty-year-old officer, comes to work for Columbus, making fifty thousand dollars a year. And they stay here, say, five years. That means that we have paid them two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus their training. And then somebody says to them, hey, look, LaGrange just up the road pays sixty thousand dollars a year. And you can transfer to LaGrange, you can go work in LaGrange and make ten thousand dollars a year more than you're making now. And why wouldn't you go? You've already been trained. LaGrange doesn't have that expense. But, and Columbus then loses another trained officer. This issue, I would be willing to bet you, if you met with officers in the Columbus Police Department, um, the, the issue, um, is not, give me a stipend. The issue is, you let him drive home and you don't let me drive home. It's a morale issue. It's not a financial issue for most of them. And I will also remind you that when a Columbus police officer is in their car, eh, on duty in Muskogee County, and they are chasing some, uh, some person that has robbed a bank, they don't stop at the county line, at the, at the district, uh, the state line and say, oops, can't go into Alabama. It'll cost, if I have a wreck, it'll cost too much money. I, see ya. Uh-uh. They don't do that. They are obligated to go.
Absolutely.
Let me finish, okay?
Hold one second.
I have talked with a number of, um, deputy sheriffs, for example. And the fact that, um, the Muskogee County Sheriff allows his, um, deputies to drive into Alabama, drive home. Uh, and the fact that there are certain limits to that. They can't drive, um, to Montgomery, they can't live in Montgomery. They have to live in a, a given, uh, um, mileage from the, uh, state line, which I believe is probably true of all of these, uh, border cities. You can't just drive anywhere. You, there's a limit. One of the, one of the, um, deputies that I talked to, who is a deputy in Russell County, who lives in Midland, drives his car home every night. And he said to me, that's, I think that's my car, and so I take care of it. I know when it needs to have the oil changed. I know when there's a, a trouble with a tire. I need to get that done. I need to take care of that. All of the issues that I have heard on this question is the morale issue and what we are doing, um, to make a differentiation between forty-five of our officers and the rest of the Columbus Police Department. I would be willing to bet you, if you'd put up that slide that showed the number of employees in each, i- in each department, with the exception of the Columbus Police Department and the sheriff's office, all those other people are management. They're not rank-and-file, uh, employees. There are no rank-and-file employees that I am aware of in the Columbus Fire Department that has a, a car that they could drive into Alabama. So if any of them are driving into Alabama, they're management. I know that we made a special exception. Uh, this council made a special exception to allow the warden of the Muskogee County Jail to drive a car into Alabama.
That is correct.
Well-
Management. I'm not finished. The differentiation between allowing management to drive and telling the rank-and-file officer, no, you can't do that. I don't care what your stipend is, it's not gonna make up the difference. And I, I, I'm just, I'm just so frustrated that it seems to me that this report was based on, don't do it.
What, what, Ms. Mayor?
And, and I agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Tyson, Counselor Huff. We need to, we need to talk to the people who are involved. Now, I understand that you did talk with, um, the police chief and you did talk with, I think, um, maybe the homeland security guy. Okay, but when we put this, this group together, I'm not sure I want the police chief there. I want somebody that it, that it might be affecting. I want somebody who, uh, knows the, the process and so forth. And I want us to, eh, to go forward in this issue with the idea that we're gonna make it work.
And Ms. Mayor, if I, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um, first of all, Lauren, I apologize that you're getting fussed at today as a new risk manager and, and-
You apologize for what?
That she's getting fussed at today. Um, but, but when I talked to staff, I said to them, you know, we, I want to do it and, and I think we ought to take the risk. So they were not operating on a mode that, figure out how you can't do it. And the city attorney says from a legal standpoint, um, you know, we don't recommend it. I said, we ought to take the risk. Augusta's taking the risk. Our sheriff is taking the risk. And, and, and we can, you can change this right here at the table today because the council developed the take-home policy. It's approved by you. It's your take-home policy. You voted on it. And all you gotta do is do six votes and take the risk, just like Augusta and just like the sheriff, and you can do that today. So it's not Lauren, she doesn't get to make the decision.
Mr. City Manager, if you think that I was, um, uh, ugly to Lauren, I will apologize all day long.
Yes, I do think you were ugly.
But my issue is that, that it does not answer the question that we were asked to answer. And I'm sorry if my, um, uh, my tone of voice or if my enthusiasm for doing this offended you. I am truly sorry, Lauren. I did not mean to do that. But I will tell you that I am, uh, s- very, very disappointed in this, uh, in the way that this seemed to be looked at. Everything that you've got on here, uh, there's another, there's another one of these slides down here that says, uh, risk and, and, uh, uh, acceptance. And the risk is, you know, I-
Well, and I, and I think I'll, I'll add to, uh, let me add as well, because we, we did sit in there with the city attorney, with the city manager, and we talked about how to frame this. Um, risk management, the s- the city attorney, who I don't agree with, oftentimes, their job is to try to lay out the perspective from what they do. So if they're supposed to be evaluating and, and mitigating risk, if they're supposed to be looking at the law and how it's gonna impact and what the, uh, liability level rises to, that's what they're supposed to do. The idea is to try to bring all the information.
But that's not all you're supposed to do in this issue.
But let me finish. You, you've asked me to finish. But it's, it's their job to do their piece and then bring that back. And then this council, I, I was ready from the beginning. I'd talked with the police department about just, let's take the risk. That's what some of these other, uh, uh, cities have done. Let's just take the risk. We owed it to the taxpayers to at least start looking at what the si- what the implications might be through these other areas. I would welcome a group that wants to get together from the different agencies. Uh, I think it makes sense to have the city attorney. Might make sense to bring somebody in since they're out of session, uh, from, from our local delegation. Uh, and see if we can get them on board to try to help push, push this, this thread back through the needle. So I, I can promise you that nobody wants to try to make this work anymore than the people sitting around this table. All the people sitting around this table. So, all right, we've got several others. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to kind of piggyback on what, uh, I'm in favor of lifting it and just moving forward with it. Maybe put a six-month time limit on it.
Yeah.
Uh, tie into what, uh, Counselor Begley said about, uh, bringing a group of folks together and the mayor and, um, and also involve GMA, ACCG, and I think Lauren mentioned, uh, in her, in her presentation, that some legal teams, get them involved, uh, and, and, and just get everybody to the table and, and, and move forward with it. If, if we put a time limit on it, then that pushes us to, to, you know, get the folks together and try to, try to come up with a solution. Or at least a direction to go in. And if we're gonna get legislative folks involved, they're gonna go back in session in January. So, you know, we've got to get something, that gives us six months. We've got to get something done in that, in that interim period. Uh, so I would like, I'd like to make a motion that we do something along those lines, that we give ourselves a six-month timeline. We bring those that have been identified by Counselor Begley and, uh, the city attorney and city manager and the mayor and, and just get them, get them in a room and let's try to get this, this answered. Um, it seems to me ACCG and GMA owe it to the community members to get this resolved. This needs to be a top agenda item for them, for this next year, the next six months, in my opinion. But anyway, Mayor, I'll make that in form of a motion.
Okay. All right, we do have a motion. I had, uh, city attorney.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make a couple of points, that everybody's made good points around the room. The, uh, the liability exposure is obviously what lawyers and risk managers worry about and lose sleep over. The, uh, sovereign immunity application in Georgia is, the way it works is if an officer causes a motor vehicle accident, the officer cannot be sued individually in Georgia. Well, that's not the case in Alabama. The officer can be sued individually in Alabama and there's no cap on liability. Sky's the limit. The city could be brought into a case in Alabama. There's no liability cap. Sky's the limit. Those are things that we're concerned about. And of course, the best solution would be if Alabama and Georgia got together and developed a compact or a statute, interstate compact, that said, Georgia, your liability and caps and protections will apply if your officers are in a motor vehicle accident in Alabama. And that's the, one of the best solutions out there. If we could get that accomplished through the general assembly and the attorney general and the folks in Alabama. But we, we're always gonna be concerned about officers' individual liability, which is sky's the limit in Alabama if they're brought into a case. And I just wanted to make that final point.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. So, I, I think we should allow it to happen and then let the individuals that would be driving the car over to Alabama know, knowing that they're open to personal liability with no cap, then they get to decide if they're gonna take their car home or not. We allow it, w- knowing the risks, and then they decide yes or no. But then it's, it's their decision if they, you know, if they want to take that risk on them, on themselves. We're willing to take the risk. So I'd lo- I'd like to make the motion that we just, we say yes to option two.
There was a motion on the floor, uh, and I think it was to allow them, just absorb the risk, allow them to go over into the, the state.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
And, um, it, we, it, we probably should have a form to be signed.
Which option was that?
Excuse me. We probably should have a form to be signed by the officer acknowledging that he understands, he or she understands that, that they're subject to, uh, the, the liabilities as described by the city attorney.
Okay, so that was the original motion. Is, is yours the second?
The original, so was the original motion option two?
I think it was broader than option two. Yeah, it was, it was to allow them, it was allowed, to allow them to take home, take their car home. They sign a, uh, an understanding agreement of what, what the liability situation is. We put together a coalition of partners to try to move this forward in the next six months.
The, my, my, um, concern is, I don't wanna give them, give them something and then pull the rug out from underneath them in six months.
Gives us motivation to try to work it out. That's why you put a timeline on it. We've got the chair of the rules committee living right here in Columbus, Georgia. If we go sit down with him and get him to partner with us, I, I think that's gonna carry some weight at legislative level.
Will they be able to, starting, if we voted on this today, would they be able to start driving their car and then we would just be looking into the risks?
Once they sign the form, understanding the liability that they're assuming.
Okay, then I'll second your motion.
Okay, there is a second to the motion. Uh, Counselor Kogel, is this to the motion?
No, I mean, I guess you beat me to it, but, um, I, I just, I guess the, the only thing that I, I just really wanted to say is that we're, um, you know, we're, we're asking our law enforcement officials to put their lives on the line every day. And I think the very least that we can do is assume the risk that they are gonna drive their car home and get in an accident um, while they assume the risk every day of losing their life. So I, I, I think, you know, I, I think the, you know, I, I, I think if you're looking on the pendulum, I, I think that they win and, and we, we can do that. At very least, we can do that for our law enforcement officers.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thomas?
Well, I, I was thinking, uh, when, uh, Counselor Allen made the motion that, and the, um, suggestion that Counselor Crabbe had, that certainly could be a topic of conversation in, let's develop the policy that deals with all of our public safety and city employees driving out of state. Um, the guy who drives to Harris County has the same liability, I believe, the same, um, uh, chance of the liability driving into Harris County or driving down Schaumburg Road that the, uh, officer has driving to, um, Phoenix City. So I, I would, I would support, let's, let's take a look at it, let's make a policy. Let's make sure that it fits what we need to do, that it includes conversation with all of those entities that are, uh, impacted by this. Uh, and that we, um, we make sure that we put in the rules and regulations that we need to put in and that we still give the, um, police department and the sheriff's office and all these other folks the opportunity to make their rules and regs, uh, if there need to be additional rules and regs. Uh, I know that, um, you know, some, some of these places that let them take the car home, you can stop by the grocery store on the way home. Uh, eh, uh, in fact, one of the officers told me that, um, in another county, that, um, they were encouraged to drive their cars to church on Sunday morning. Uh, and whenever they're in the car, they have to be in uniform. So they go into church on Sunday morning in uniform. And he says sometimes that, uh, causes some conversation in the, in the sanctuary. But those kinds of things, we need to make sure that whatever we decide- sure that whatever we decide, we're not driving these cars. We're not police officers or sheriffs. We're not responsible for that. They are. Let's make sure that we hit what we need to hit. And I would, I would prefer that we have some of these conversations on the policy before we turn them loose into, into Alabama and make sure that policies, I would prefer a six day timeline rather than a six month timeline if we could do that. But let's get it done and let's get it done as thoroughly as we can and cover all the bases that we can cover. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Kogle?
I just, I, I just want to make sure that we kind of have it on record that we, you know, if we, obviously if we vote for this motion, that in six months, if the legislation can't change or won't change, that we revisit it with the attitude of we, we're not going to just end it and, and be done with it and, but we're going to do, we're either one, going to adopt number two and just continue to assume the risk, or, you know, look at it from an attitude of we can if, not we can't. So I just, I just want to make sure that that's down on the record, that in six months, when we come back, if the state legislation doesn't do anything or can't do anything, or their hands are tied, that we as a council and we as a city return back to this with the, with the intention that we can continue this forward if we need to change some things, but with the intention that we will continue this forward to the very best of our abilities.
All right, we've got the, we've got a motion and a second. And did, do we say what the date of implementation would be? When they would, when it would begin?
Sign that waiver.
Okay, soon as, okay.
As soon as the waiver is signed.
All right, good.
Well, it's not a waiver, it's just an acknowledgement of a liability situation.
Does that include all city employees or just the ones in Alabama?
I guess it'd be the ones in Alabama because the, the liability issue is not, it doesn't appear to be in Georgia. It only, it only, but it, but in the liability situation in Alabama, there's no limit. There's no limit on the, on the, the police officer can be sued. Is that not what you said, city attorney? The city, and they cannot in Georgia, right? And, and I don't mind a six day timeline to get this settled. Like you mentioned, the six month timeline I put on it was for us to have a deadline to get to, to try to get something at the state level resolved. That's what the six months.
So Mayor, for clarification.
Putting the pressure on us to get something.
For clarification, this is for any city employee with a take home vehicle? I understood it was just for public safety.
Just public safety.
Well, why, why not for other employees? I, I, I'm just telling you what I understood the motion, motion to be. And I think it's, I think it's critical to acknowledge too, that even if we go to our state legislature and they agree wholeheartedly and get behind it and push, it has to be approved in Alabama. Because it's Alabama who is not providing any limitations on our liability. It doesn't, almost doesn't matter what we say if they decide to dig their, dig their heels in. So, so Ms. Mayor, whether it's done or not, I have to ask that our other employees be treated equally?
Well, the, the presentation, as I understood it, there were ninety. That was public safety, right?
That's public safety only.
Do we know offhand how many?
We do not. Our, our research was strictly focused on public safety.
Well, we don't have, I, I mean, I don't know the number, but.
We don't need the number today, but we can head in that direction. I, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. All right, Counsel Barnes?
Today, it's just public safety.
Right.
I just want to add something else into this year. The more I, I think about it, Judy, the more I, I'm thinking about what you're saying. How, I would like to, to know whether are, what, are these active public safety officers, to, to your point, so I know what our liability is. Because you hit on a point, and so did Joanne. I have son-in-laws in Philadelphia. And, and you know, it's, it's, if, if there's any way where we could find out how many officers, I'm talking about ground, not administrative personnel are taking, so we will know what our liability would be. I'd like for us to pursue that. Because what you, the issue you brought up about morale.
Hit you button again. I turned it off. Hit you button again. No, it's my apology. I hit the wrong button.
You want me to start over? Could you hear me?
I think it got you.
You can hear me, right? Okay, thank you. But that's a very valid point. My son-in-law's been with the Philadelphia Police Force over thirty years. And you know, it's, the public safety is just like the military, the ones that go out there to put their life on the line. And it is a morale issue. It's a morale issue. So I, so while we're doing this, I would like to throw in, let us find out how many active officers, because it may be something that we can't absorb. But we, we come up, and I, and I say this all the time, when there's something that we want to do, we can, we have a very good finance officer, Angelica, we come up with the money. I, I think that that would be, I think that's, would be a big morale thing for public safety. So if we can come up, if I could throw that in during that time, if we can come up with what our liability would be, we know the actual number of officers.
So, so Ms. Mayor, I think, so, so she said there are ninety that leave, but you want to know the actual, that drive vehicles?
Because I, I, the more I thought about it.
Yeah.
That's a valid point. And it may not be so large that we could not absorb the, the liability ourselves. That's, I would like for us to, to pursue that.
We, we can, Lauren can identify who actually of the ninety drive their vehicles into, or into Alabama.
Because that, that's something that we, you put a good point, Judy. We don't know that.
Okay. All right, Counselor Crabbe?
Chief Mathis is in the audience, and I'd like to offer, you know, to him if he would like to speak on this issue, to be able to come up.
I'll call him up as soon as we get with the, the counselors that are queued up.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll promise you. Counselor Huff?
So will we be able to get the paperwork in place for them to sign and be driving by next week?
I think absolutely can. I think all it takes is a short memo from the city attorney to put it together and let them get it to the supervisors.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And, and I think that is all the comments. Chief Mathis, you want to make a comment or two?
All right. Stay right there. Mayor, counsel, I was not prepared to speak today, but I appreciate this opportunity. I think there's a little misunderstanding. When we say not to go in Alabama, we go in Alabama on a daily basis. We do follow-up investigations. We do backgrounds on potential new hires. So we're in and out of Alabama every day doing business. So if, if, I, I appreciate it. Sounds like you guys are going to vote for this. And thank you very much. Because when we talk about liability, the liability that we have as police officers, being a hundred and forty police officers down, is a huge liability. And if we can do something to improve morale of these police officers, like simply allowing them to take their cars five, ten miles into Alabama, that's going to improve morale. It's not only going to prevent me from losing more police officers, but we're going to be allowed to recruit more people from Alabama that will come here, that have not come here because they simply, they would rather work in Alabama and drive their cars into Columbus, because they're allowed to do that, opposed to working here and driving ten, ten miles into Alabama. And certainly, we need a policy to cover how far are they allowed to go, a policy to cover they're not allowed to use blue lights and siren or run emergency equipment inside Alabama. And yes, there's some, there's some risk there. But just like Counsel, Judy said earlier, we run the risk of losing police officers with five, six, seven years' experience. We're losing two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars every time they walk out the door. We want to retain this training. We want to retain these experienced police officers. And I promise you, you guys voting for this is going to put a, a shot in the morale at the police department. There's nothing that I could do that's going to make that morale as higher than what you guys are voting on today. So I appreciate this opportunity, and I'm all about providing limitations and policies to, to make sure that we're covering the, the most liability that we can. But thank you, and I appreciate it. But I'm here to answer any questions if you need to.
Chief, thank you. We thank the men and women of the Columbus Police Department who were here today too, to make sure that, that your presence was noted during these deliberations. All right, there is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that's passed.
And so Mayor, we will get the information. Counsel Barnes asked for it, and, and I will have it for the general government employees on the next agenda.
Okay. And will the city attorney, if you reach out to Chief Mathis and begin to start pulling together some type of policy as far as distance from the border and, and any, you know, the, the lights and the sirens and all of those parameters. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, while Chief Mathis is here. I wanted to thank him and also the members of the East Precinct and whoever's been on the detail that's going into our parks. And actually, I've been making phone calls because some senior citizens, they part of neighborhood watch group, they send photos almost every day of criminal activities. And I'm sure that's how we got their complaint over there in Beverly Hills Park. So I'm thanking you on behalf of this, myself, but the citizens of District Four. I, I wanted to actually say a name because Sergeant John Duncan, he actually sent out some individuals yesterday. Like soon as I call, I mean, within five minutes, they're there. So just thank you for really just getting out there in, in, in the community. I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Thank all of you. I appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so, Ms. Mayor, we'll have that on the next agenda. But I really want to, this is Lauren, Lauren's first appearance at council as our new risk manager. And, and you've been with that department for how long?
Three years.
Three years. And was trained by our former risk manager, Anne Marie Emile. And Lauren, we did a national search, and we could find none better than Lauren. And I'm proud of the work that she has done and that she is going to do for us. And I want to thank you and, and for what you're going to do.
Thank you.
But you did a good job today. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
It's good to see Lauren. I hadn't seen Lauren for a long time. So I was wondering where you are. How's your son doing?
Doing well, doing well, thank you.
Counsel Barnes?
Thank you. I, I, I.
This technology.
We're good.
So next, I, I don't know if you want to hear any more on energy care today. I see some heads saying no. So we will come back with what we've talked about. And then the final presentation today is Legacy Terrace update.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This, actually, the Finance Director would be giving the, the spiel of this is in accordance with thirteen dash thirty-nine, when there's going to be a over budget situation that they need to come to council and get approval to go over budget. And so that's what Legacy Terrace really is about. But there are, most of you who were not on council at the time that the city acquired Legacy Terrace. So I do have a little bit of a history for information on those. Legacy Terrace is a seventeen-unit affordable housing area. It's right off of Ninth Street and Eighth Avenue. So this kind of gets you oriented. The Liberty Theater is to the south, and then to the west would be the jail. So it's located in the Liberty District. And Legacy Terrace was a facility that was built in twenty, two thousand and six through a partnership that we had with Four Street Towers, Inc., which at the time was the city's chodo. And that was done since nineteen ninety-two. The Housing Authority used to operate our CDBG Home Program. And so they had established Four Street Tower, Inc. as the chodo. When the city took over the Home Program again, back in ninety-eight, we continued to do partnerships with Four Street Towers, Inc. And so as part of the Home Program, fifteen percent of the allocation of the entitlement goes to a chodo. Currently, our chodo is Neighbor Works. You're probably more familiar with them. But back in the, the nineties and the early two thousands, we also utilized Four Street Towers. So in January of two thousand and four, the CDAC Board reviewed and approved the initial allocation, and it was eventually approved by council of three hundred and fifty thousand. There were additional allocations for the construction of Legacy Terrace through the Home Program, totally nine hundred and forty-four thousand. The total project was two point five million. Four Street Towers, Inc. did get a private loan for the difference of about one and a half million dollars. They put Legacy Terrace as a collateral, as well as eight other properties as a collateral for that loan that were also funded through the Home Program. And there is also a twenty-year affordability period, whenever our federal funds are used. So there was, it still was in the affordable period for that program. So as I stated, they had collateralized their private loan with eight properties, as well as this particular property. And they began to struggle to meet the financial obligations to pay that loan with SunTrust, because they were only renting about four of those seventeen units. And so back when, to avoid the private loan going into foreclosure, the city would have been obligated to not only repay the home for this property, but also the eight other properties, because that would have been taken if the loan foreclosed. So that was about one point six million dollars. So at the time when this discussion was going on with city council, back in two thousand and nine, the city acquired Legacy Terrace for a million dollars. That was done through an approval by council, Resolution oh eighty-eight dash oh nine. And the affordable, affordability period for Legacy Terrace goes all the way through twenty twenty-seven. We also, at the time when Legacy Terrace was acquired, we contracted with the Housing Authority to manage the property. We are not, as a city, in the business of property management for these types of facilities. There's also a lot of home requirements related to these type of properties. You have to continue to review the eligibility of the occupants. And so it was a partnership that we developed with the Housing Authority that would operate the facility. They would collect the rents. They would handle all the leasing obligations, the renewal of the leases, as well as the compliance with the Home Program. So what brings us here today is that any excess revenue over expenditures is remitted to us monthly by the Housing Authority. Those funds are reserved specifically for Legacy Terrace. And so from two thousand and nine through two thousand and nineteen, we did accumulate a balance of over three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We did have some major repairs that we came and discussed with you in two thousand and nineteen that depleted our reserve to about eighty thousand dollars. In February of twenty-two, we came to again, because there were some issues with termites at that facility. And we estimated through the, the architect that was working with the Housing Authority for those repairs to be about ninety-one thousand dollars. And at that time, we had reserves of about ninety-five thousand dollars. And so we felt comfortable with the estimate from the architect that we could make those improvements and correct the units. There were two units that really had a lot of termite damage. The actual repair cost came in at a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am?
Somebody out of this hallway just called me. It's hard to hear what, what you're saying.
Yes, ma'am.
She's got it.
Okay, so.
Probably because there's more out there than in here.
Yeah. So the estimate, the actual repairs came in at a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Our current reserve balance is a hundred and twelve thousand. That reserve balance is through April. We haven't, we just received May. I think it was another additional thousand dollars. So it might be at about a hundred and thirteen thousand. So the funding requirement to make these improvements and to reimburse the Housing Authority and the request is just over twenty-two thousand dollars for Legacy Terrace. There has been some discussion with the Housing Authority. There has been some discussion with the Housing Authority about the facility. We have looked. They do monthly inspections on the HVAC system. They have had the roof inspected and at this time does not require any replacement. But we know that there's going to be ongoing maintenance at this facility. It's been since two thousand and six, so it's seventeen years old. But we are in the affordability period. And so until we end the affordability period, we have to maintain this as an affordable housing facility. And our best partner, we feel, is the Housing Authority because that's what they do, is manage affordable housing. And so the request is to fund the balance out of reserves of just over twenty thousand dollars. We will replenish the reserves as we collect each month from the Housing Authority moving forward. And so it will, hopefully by the end of FY twenty-four, this will be replenished through those monthly checks that we get from the Housing Authority for the operation of Legacy Terrace. And we are, you know, looking at, this was a termite issue. They do have a termite replace, a retreatment bond so that when additional termites come up, they come out and re-treat. They were not able to get a termite repair bond, meaning that their company would not guarantee that they would come in and make the repairs if there were additional termite damage because of the type of termite. And I'm not a termite person, but I, from what I understand, this particular type of termite is very aggressive and they were not able to get a repair bond, only a retreatment bond. So...
Just a second. Deputy City Manager Hodges, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll make that motion. I don't think we have any other choice at this point. But I do want to thank you, Mayor, Deputy City Manager Hodges, Mrs. City Manager. Thank you all for, we had a little meeting yesterday and we got a lot of stuff out on the table and talked about, I think everybody kind of made some good points and some concerns. I would encourage maybe, look, I can't tell the Housing Authority who they can and can't use, but I think there are, like I stated, some new treatments out there that, you know, quite possibly would allow for further protection, but that might be a necessary, any way possible there, just by the nature of like the Deputy City Manager just said, you know, the nature of the beast. So anyway, but thank you all for taking the time and having that conversation.
Yes, sir. Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Hodges, the twenty-two thousand, is that currently in the current reserve balance? Or are you asking us for an additional twenty-two thousand?
I am requesting an additional twenty-two thousand. We maintain the legacy reserve in the general fund. And so this would, I guess, be a, the general fund reserve providing twenty thousand dollars to the Legacy Terrace Reserve and will be paid back during this fiscal, FY twenty-four fiscal year.
And was that Counselor Davis' motion to do that? Okay, I will second that motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that's approved. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor, that can...
Counselor Davis?
Before you conclude, Mr. City Manager, I just got to tell you something.
Yes, sir.
Friday night, I was out, I was out in the Uptown area and actually I gave Counselor Kogle a really, really hard time, but I got a hard time from my wife because she reminded me that I wasn't, we went out to dinner and she quickly reminded me that you need to park correctly. And I'm like, I am. I'm in a parking space, she said, no, you're not. And anyway, I opened the door and looked out and I wasn't and it hit me and we talked about, I think we talked about this before, but it, it kind of hit me and I'm not sure if I remember the conversation right. We talked about maybe some of the vendors not being able to, I guess, do the work in a timely manner. And I think we talked about, do we have the ability to go out and reach out and go out to other vendors that might be able to do it? But I really, and I told my wife I'm going to call the council of the district and give her heck, and I did. And I told her that, you know, she needs to get matters taken care of in district. No, it was jokingly, I did that. But I guess my point is that the, I think we need a little TLC in some areas down there in Uptown because you really, at nighttime, maybe I'm just old, I don't know, can't see anymore. But I used to have pretty good vision, you know, at one time. But I, you know, striping the lines and being able to delineate when the parking spaces down there, I think is real important. And there, there's some places down there you can't, you just can't see. You really can't, especially at nighttime and, you know, and maybe some other areas about limbing up, limbing up trees and landscaping and things like that, I think it would go a long way. So I just wanted to bring that up to you.
Okay.
As a referral or maybe just put that on your to-do list or FYI, all the above and maybe something, you know, can get going on that. And I don't, maybe there's some plans in the works, I don't know, but I thought I'd just share that with you.
Yeah, we'll list it as a referral on that list that I talked about earlier. And I mean, it'll be a work order assignment to those responsible for striping or trimming up and all that.
Okay.
But you may need to get your eyes examined because you said your wife noticed that you...
And you didn't. Can't do it in neon. All right, Counselor Kogle?
I'm going to defend myself here a little bit there, Counselor Davis. But I think I've addressed it several times with engineering and, you know, and we've had a couple sidebar conversations about not having the people to stripe it. And I think our last conversation was that the restriping was supposed to be taken care of in October prior to rush south. But just for the record, once again, we can't just keep waiting for a, an event to happen in Uptown in order to dress up our city. Like this has to be a continual effort of getting ahead of the game and being proactive rather than reactive. And we do, we do highlight Uptown on, and the Riverwalk, Streetscape on every single piece of marketing material that we have in Columbus. And if we can't, if we can't keep it pretty and pristine, then that's what our tourists and that's what our citizens who are using the Uptown area are seeing, you know. And I will champion for, you know, citywide, but, as well. But, you know, just even off of Ryan's presentation of the homeless or the trash situation in the stairwells, that's not just at the Civic Center or that's not just at the city, the city center or what, Sonova Center or whatever we're calling it right now, City Hall, that's in almost every single parking deck. That's at, you know, that's at the Walmart parking deck and the walkover in South Columbus. So it's, it's in the, the parking decks, the old Ledger Inquirer, it's in the CSU parking decks. It's just, we just need to maybe tighten up just a little bit and, and just really not wait for events to happen in order to clean up those areas. So I appreciate the effort.
Yeah, let me just say, I don't, I think she probably gave you a timeline based on resources and not waiting on an event, but a timeline will get it.
Well, I mean, I have, I've been asking since January, so...
But I understand, still, I mean, we've got three thousand miles of stripes that...
I understand that, but we also have...
And we may have two people.
Correct, but we're, this is also the, this is also the epicenter of Columbus. So where we're putting tourists, where we're putting graduation, where we're getting, people are getting parking tickets because they can't see the parking lines. They're, they're parking in handicap spots because they don't know it's a handicap spot because it's not lined, you can't see.
And I will say to you, we have to apply our resources equally over the two hundred and twenty square miles. We can't just say, well, this is a special area. We've got to apply the resources for all of those people in Urban Service District Two who pay for the same thing or one.
Well, it's on the record.
All right, Counselor Davis?
You know, I should give you, I'll just give you a reference, a starting point from the government, First Avenue, let's go down First Avenue, start at Government Center all the way down to Total Systems, that's a good place to start. You know, just limbing and cleaning up and...
All right.
That might help you.
What's the location again?
First Avenue from Government Center to Total Systems.
Okay.
Ninth to fourteenth. Counselor Huff?
Yes, Mr. City Manager, they are working now on the I-185 Old Cathedral Road project.
Yeah.
Out by Mount Hill. But coming from Far Road back to Cathedral Road, Old Cathedral Road. All that outgrowth, upgrowth, outgrowth is coming back out where you can't see the stop signs and everything. So if you could get it trimmed back, I know it's still on us, they have barrels out there, but they're not doing anything, they're just working. But it's still going to grow out where the ones that have to walk down the dirt sidewalk and the trees are growing over toward the stop sign now.
Yeah, and we're going to take a look at it and I think what we're going to try and do a better job is gauging how long it will take us to get to, like in the referral list. Some things, as I said, based on resources, it's on the list and we need to give continuous updates on that list. And I agree with the counselor who says that we should, I mean, we got to organize it that some things, when they're done, they come off the list and it keeps rolling. But, and I don't, I'm not making excuses when, like, you know, people call and say, well, you know, they mowed the right-of-way six weeks ago and it's rained for X number of days and it's right back up. And we can't really tell people that because of our limited resources, we only mow right-of-way three times a year, three times a year. What, you know, steam mill near Diamond School where kids got, I mean, and so we are going to get it, but, you know, we've got to make sure that we are servicing all of the right-of-way. Street sweepers, you know, we, so we are going to get it and that's why on that referral list, we've got to say, you know, we're getting closer, we got to give some kind of timeframe so that you know. And so we got to work to perfect that list. And I think that's going to be, once we get it right, it's going to be a good referral list for the mayor and council. But we got it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, City Manager, can you add on the list to make an actual telephone contact to the individual? I think it's the post office on Buena Vista Road, the old post office where they're, so we did a really good job working with the new owners that bought that old Walmart. But what they did was they crossed the street. So now they're parking the trucks, the eighteen-wheelers.
Yeah, at the old Walmart.
So now they're mostly parking in front of the old post office across the street behind, in that little shopping center. And, you know, we've multiple times had to pay, well, city funds to clean up that area. It's becoming a nuisance again. And before school starts, I hope that we can get some movement because the kids, you know, walk to school. And it's, I think, a daycare that actually has, is over there in the same little parking area, but they have some concerns with the trucks parking in that area. But we can't just send the letters.
You said something about a phone number.
Yeah, so the old post office, if we can actually make a phone call instead of sending out a letter.
Yeah.
But really taking some action to truly get in contact with whoever owns that property. I was told that it was sold, I'm not sure, but whoever owns that property?
Yeah.
That way we can get those trucks removed from over there and clean that area up.
Okay. And I believe you asked for a report on something else, but Donna, as you left, and... Yeah, and so we'll get that to you, but she left. On payment management, I believe. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
All right, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, it's your agenda.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilors. For the Clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution excusing Counselor Garrett from today's meeting.
Motion second to approve item one, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Item two is a travel authorization request for Counselor Bagley to attend the Fall twenty twenty-three Robert E. Knox Jr. Municipal Leadership Institute.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand.
One, two, three.
All opposed, same side.
One, two, three, four.
That's inconclusive.
Okay, since it's an inconclusive vote, we will bring this back at the next meeting.
Okay.
Item number three is an email correspondence from Attorney Sly. He's the Hospital Authority Board Secretary. They're requesting...
Motion received. The letter clearing vacant, is her second?
Yes, Ms. Chester does, she desires to vacate her seat and wants to do that as soon as a successor is appointed.
Got you. All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Approved.
Item four is an email correspondence from Mr. Chris Corriere. He's resigning from his District Two seat on the Community Development Advisory Council. Yes, he has accepted another appointment to the Public Safety Advisory Commission.
Motion received with regrets, her second? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion received, the minutes, is her second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're received.
Next, we have board appointments. We have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. The Animal Control Advisory Board, Ms. Lori Turner was nominated to fill the non-expire term of Mr. Stephen Waters.
Motion second to approve Ms. Turner, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, she's confirmed.
Thank you. Next, we have for the Audit Committee, Mr. Michael Bruder was nominated to serve in this new member seat.
All right, motion second to approve Mr. Bruder, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, he's confirmed.
Next.
That's correct.
That is correct, mhm. Next, we have the Building Authority of Columbus, Mr. Johnny Byrd the Second was nominated to succeed Ms. Lila Carr. She may be confirmed.
Motion second to approve Mr. Byrd, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters, the seat of Sarah Ann Arcilia, it is open for nominations. And I believe Counselor Bagley has a nominee.
All right, Counselor Davis?
Now, are you...
Is that on this? Okay. Counselor Bagley?
I would like to nominate Pete Timasen.
Okay.
And we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting.
Great.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Davis?
Mayor, just a, just a understanding on the, on the Audit Committee, I'm, an update, I guess we've got everything taken care of to get everybody confirmed and move forward. I believe you have a couple of...
Mine are already confirmed.
Yours are done, too?
Yep.
So, okay, just trying to get an update of where we're at on that, on the, on the committee. When will it start actually taking action or functioning?
Well, now the council has theirs done, I think soon as they can call a meeting.
Yes. Counselor Davis, the Clerk's Office will set up the initial meeting with the committee members and then will, the committee will make certain decisions about vice chair and those type of things and how often they are going to be meeting. But the Clerk's Office will set up the initial meeting for the committee.
Good, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. All right, is that it, Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and Ms. City Attorney, we have a couple of items and executive... All right, and Ms. City Attorney, we have a couple of items in executive session, I'm going to let.
Yes, Mayor.
Litigation, potential litigation.
Potential litigation, litigation, real estate acquisition and disposal and personnel.
Okay, we need to, I think we had a motion and a second to go in executive session, did we not? Had a motion, all right, there's a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session. All right, we are out of special. Excuse me, we are out of special session, executive session. It was special though. And back in regular session, we discussed litigation, potential litigation, personnel, real estate acquisition and disposal. No votes were taken on those items. I'm going to turn it over to City Attorney, Mr. Faye.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to call up a resolution, it's been distributed around the table. So it would authorize a settlement of the case of Ralph Dow and Alan Tony Laidall versus Columbus Consolidated Government and Other Officials for a total payment of six hundred thousand dollars, it's ready for action.
Motion second to approve the item, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That is approved. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.